I'll go ahead and start tonight's meeting, first by welcoming everyone here. We always like to see people in the audience, especially friendly people. It's nice, thank you. For the record, it is Tuesday, October 10th, it's 3:00. We'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Borton.
Here.
Councilmember Byrd.
Here.
Mayor DeVeard.
Here.
And Councilmember Milam is absent.
Thank you. Item 2 is our Pledge of Allegiance. If we all rise, Jensen, the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 3 is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Under the consent agenda, item H, the resolution number is 17-2040. Under department reports, we need to, under the mayor's office, add Resolution 17-2043, which is the appointment of Michelle Jensen to Seat 5 and Mike Pippen to Seat 2 of the Meridian Parks Commission. And with that, I move we... Oh, item 6C, the resolution number is 17-2041. And with that, I move we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Item 4 is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
As stated, item H, the resolution number is 17-2040. And this consent agenda also moves, approves paying invoices up to $999,258,59 cents.
Second.
With that, I move we approve the consent agenda. Mayor, to sign the clerk to a test.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is read. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. There are no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move to our next, item 6, community presentations. We'll kick it off with a presentation by Light My Fire. And go ahead and Chief?
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is a great time of the year for us, again. We do this every year, and we're very honored to have the Light My Fire folks here on behalf of a lot of the work they have done to benefit our city and our burnout fund. And so with that, Bob or Mary, who's doing the speaking here? Mary is. Go figure.
Yeah, go figure. It is such a privilege to be here today. This is one of the things that we work for 10 months out of the year to do, and that is to bring you guys a check, or two. And behind me, we have Kerry Ogden with Disaster Cleanup, Andrea Bradshaw with Bell 4, Chrissy Kay with CTR, Bob Ricketts with Ricketts and Associates. And there's a collective group of us, agents, disaster cleanup type of companies, that bond together. We lay down the lances, we work together to make money to help in areas that will, where people have a house that burns down, or fire safety and prevention. Pam Moore is another one of our committee members, and Joe Bonjono. I calculated it up, this year, over $400,400 has been contributed over the past 24 years. And this year, we get to celebrate the 25th anniversary, which is going to be really exciting for us. And we're hoping that you're going to come and show up and help us to raise the funds for these people that are burnt out of their home, and then to help save people's lives by being able to get out of that fire in a hurry. So with that, I have, for you, Chief Neimeyer, $8,496,000.
Wow.
Well, I said that wrong. Oh, my goodness.
You're my new best friend.
But that magically doubles, because you have a matching grant fund. And so that turns into $16,992, which is awesome. So thanks for matching that. And then for the burnout, Joe Bonjono, for you, we have $5,664 for burnout, for when people really need that help.
Awesome.
And then on February the 23rd, we are having our 25th anniversary celebration. It's black and bling. And so anyway, we invite you to come and celebrate, have dinner, come to the live and silent auction and help us raise more money.
Now, see, Mary, you're going to have to figure out how to do it online, too, because I've been to most of them, but not last year.
Right.
And I can tell you that those three women in the back are usually, I mean, totally blinged out. They... You all follow the theme of the evening, and they never make you feel bad if you're not. So encourage all of you, sitting on both sides of me, to come and experience one of those events. They're very heartwarming, it's for a great cause, and there's a lot to bid on. You guys work your tails off getting items that we get into. Usually Bob's wife and I get into a real bidding war. We seem to gravitate to the same items, so...
Judy's already been talking about that.
It's not advisable. Yes, I will win. But thank you so much. Your dollars not only are doubled, but they go to those in a time of a crisis, and we greatly appreciate the efforts that your organization, your efforts, bring to our community and to the personnel, that heartstrings are always pulled saying, "We wish we could do something, we wish we could do more," and you allow that to have happened.
Thank you.
Bob?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to maybe give a little shout out to prevention here. I know Pam works awful hard at all this. And the thing about fire prevention that we don't really have a good handle on, that is, you know, how many lives and how much property is saved by the efforts that fire prevention does? That you can't measure. You know, we can measure the amount of money we give out to burnout funds and things of this nature, but we can't measure the fire prevention. And that's something that really, really is needed, and they do a fantastic job at it. And I know I visit with some of the students and things, and my wife even takes her Boy Scout troop, or Cub Scouts, I guess, over to Pam's, and they're coming back, very knowledgeable about, you know, what to do in case of a fire. And so that's something that we're really, really in support of. So again, thank you for your...
Thank you for pointing that out, and certainly Pam's efforts, especially during Fire Prevention Month, and beyond. She... Yeah. She always goes above and beyond and never in the spotlight, always behind the scenes, quietly making it happen. So thanks for pointing that out, Bob. Chief for Pam, Joe?
I won't make Pam come up here during Fire Prevention Month. Just to echo what you said, Mayor, I do want to thank Light My Fire. They have been a strong supporter of our fire prevention efforts, certainly has helped Pam do more with less sometimes. And so, again, a reminder, this is Fire Prevention Month. We have a ton of activities going on, both through our prevention division and with our crews. And so these dollars that get donated to us help Pam support those efforts throughout the year. So certainly want to thank you again, very much.
Thank you. Maybe Pam, another opportunity to just tell us what activities are left for the remainder of the month.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. So for the rest of this month, actually, tonight, in just a few hours, well, first of all, before 5:00, I have to get the posters up for our poster contest winners. And so we did run a poster contest event for all the elementary schools, and we do have an event coming up on the 17th, where upstairs on the third floor, we will honor those little poster contest winners. Got some great posters. The great thing about that is, is that those kids were able to take that message home to their families, and ultimately, it's families that are the game changers in order to be able to make us safe, right? And so that has to be done by the end of today. And then this evening is our very first, for the rest of this week, we will be doing Domino's Pizza deliveries with Domino's. And so they partnered with us through the corporate level, which is awesome. And what that looks like is, is that we go out to people's homes who have donated, who have ordered pizza, and we follow along the delivery drivers with the fire engine, I'll be along with them, and we offer the family free pizza if we can come in and take a look at their smoke alarms. And so if the smoke alarms are operational, they get free pizza. If they're not, either I will, at that point, bring their smoke alarms back up to service, if I can do that, or we'll set up an appointment, or give them the tools essentially to be able to get that done. So it's a win-win. They either get free pizza, or they get working smoke alarms, and hopefully we'll have media out for that. It's, we've certainly requested that, so hopefully media will come out, because ultimately, it's not about the media, but it's about the message, right? It's about the message, and that's what we're doing. We're in the schools all this month, so I think we've been in there, just today, I think we had like three or four programs in the schools that the crews went on. I taught the New Recruit Academy this morning for a few hours, so that was really awesome to be able to do that, and to instill in our brand-new recruits, the prevention message, and that operational firefighting is one thing, you know, getting that wet stuff on the red stuff is one thing, but for me, it's putting that ed stuff on the red stuff, if we can prevent fires, right? It's the best way to go. And so we had an opportunity to do that this morning as well. This coming Saturday is Table Rock Challenge, which is a race that we work with, with the Treasure Valley Fire Prevention Community altogether. There are a group of us in the community that are structured firefighters and wildland firefighters that come together and do a group of events throughout the year. Those are our clown and puppet shows, right? That we are able to take a joint message throughout the Treasure Valley. And so because generally, most departments, including ours, right, you really can't do the big events without a whole lot of people. And so they help us to do that. That is our fundraiser, and so that's a Race Up to Table Rock Challenge. It's the 35th year that we have ran that. I haven't run it personally, I just work with the program. So that's this coming Saturday. Last Saturday, we had our big open house, and we had over 500 people that came to Station Number One, and that was our Public Safety Day. That was a joint effort between police and fire, because this is police, you know, Crime Prevention Month as well. So we were able to do that, and really get our education message out there as well, and we'll just continue with this month, just taking full advantage of every effort that we have and every opportunity that we have to get into the schools and into people's homes through their little ones, educating them on being safe from fire. So again, thank you very much, ma'am, for the opportunity to be able to even get that spill, and thank you, Light My Fire community. My heart, I got to tell you, I can't tell you how hard these people work. They work so hard, and I'm going to keep it straight, not cry, but they work so hard on our behalf, and to think that they do this, month after month after month, year after year after year. It's the 24th year, we just finished the 24th year, going into the 25th year, that they do this, and they do it to give 100% of the proceeds away, is just, it's humbling, very humbling to me. And as a person, and part of that public trust, if you will, right, we want to do well with those dollars. And so thank you for the support that you give to our program, and thank you, Light My Fire, for that as well.
Thank you. Yes. Okay, item 6B is under the American Heart Association. Our HR department, do you guys want to come forward, too? And Julie? But a lot of the effort by our Wellness Committee, and Christina Barney, has lent to this award, and Julie asked if she could come and make a presentation to the council. We had Christina and Crystal at the dinner last Tuesday night, accepting the award, and so Julie or Christina, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate the time. I'm the executive director of the Idaho chapter of the American Heart Association, and this is a huge honor for you guys. So we have a program that is called Work Site Health Solutions, and it is free to any work site in America to assess the health and wellness culture of the company and their employees. And Mayor Tammy and her team have really taken this on, and in the first year of this program, they're one of four companies in Idaho, or organizations in Idaho, that received a bronze level in the very first year of the program. So here is their plaque, which is wonderful, and we'll get a picture, and then cling for your door. But it really is wonderful to see her leadership in instilling that, that the policies and the actions and the culture, as well as the benefits for the employees at the City of Meridian, really are around health and wellness and prevention, and are taking those steps to give a healthy workplace for the employees here, too. So we applaud you for that very much.
Thank you, Julie. Christina, do you want to talk a little bit about what we have been doing?
So I coordinate with the Wellness Program, or the Wellness Committee, to offer a Wellness Program for the City of Meridian employees, and we have quarterly challenges, we have quizzes, we have newsletters, we have events and emails that take place throughout the year to provide healthy choices and alternatives for people who just need that extra boost to make those the proper choices in their life. And so in doing that, I saw this award is actually part of the Fit Friendly Workplace previously, and we participated in that, we were recognized for the Fit Friendly Workplace, but they've changed the program and changed the parameters. It's a little tougher to meet this time, so I was happy that we got awarded, happy that we got the bronze level, but we do have some work to do going forward so that we can maintain that bronze level, so I'm really glad we got this recognition.
And you have a good level of participation, too. I think we just did Healthy Food Bingo, and some of those fruits and vegetables I'd never heard of. You had to actually look them up just to see, and I wondered where you could even find them in a grocery store. And lo and behold, there they are.
That was the idea, was to try to get, you know, get you out of your box, and thinking about different things, and how you can incorporate that into your diet.
Right. Counsel, any questions? And Julie, do you want me to come up?
Yeah. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will point out, our HR team has really taken, and our Wellness Committee has taken this serious, and we have seen that in our experience rating. So we are achieving not only these kind of milestones, but also seeing it in our insurance rating, so that's good news. So thank you. Thank you, Julie. Okay, item 6C is Resolution 17-2041. Todd, do you have anything you want to say before we take action on this? I mean Senator Lakey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and as always, it's a nice mix between Senator and Todd and whatever when I'm in front of you guys.
Whatever. You don't want the whatever, though.
I'll answer to whatever. Madam Mayor, this is, as you said, a follow-up to our previous presentation on strengthening victims' rights in the Idaho Constitution. And we've had an opportunity, we appreciate, had an opportunity to review the resolution that's been proposed by the city. We appreciate that resolution, agree with its terms. This, I think, will help us in our efforts to give crime victims an effective voice in the criminal justice system in Idaho. So we'd ask for your support of the resolution. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for Senator Lakey?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, with that, I would entertain a motion on item 6C.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we approve Resolution Number 17-2041.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 17-2041. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 7A is under the mayor's office, and in front of you, you have Resolution 17-2042, reappointing Craig Still and John Nesmith, who have been on our Parks Commission and have served faithfully. Yesterday, the commission chair, Sharon Borton, and I conducted interviews from the submitted interests that we received, and in front of you is Resolution 17-2043. And these are to appoint Michelle Jensen and Mike Pippen to the Parks Commission, and I would stand for any questions. And I see that Mike is here, and I'll ask him if he has any words after we take action.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Seeing no discussion, I move that we approve the appointments of Craig Still and John Nesmith under Resolution Number 17-2042, and also approve Michelle Jensen and Mike Pippen under Resolution Number 17-2043 to the Meridian Parks and Recreation Commission.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Mike, would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
No, you have to say it up here. I know you have a voice that carries, but it has to go on the record.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, I just want to say I'm excited to help the commission do the work of this great community, and thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, and thank you for joining us.
You're welcome.
Okay, item 7B is under Public Works, and...
I have a resolution.
Oh, sorry, I was rushing things. Also under 7A is Resolution 17-2044, reappointing Don Kronk to the Meridian Historical Preservation Commission. Don has been someone that's been a solid performer, and someone who's contributed a lot to HPC, and I have her in front of you as to be reappointed for another term.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Little Roberts.
Hearing no discussion, I move that we approve Resolution 17-2044, reappointing Don Kronk to the Meridian Historic Preservation Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Byrd. I was so excited to get on to our annual update from the Public Works Department. I almost forgot it, but... So I will invite Dale Boldhouse to join us in the front.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for that enthusiastic invitation to spend some of your time here tonight. We appreciate that opportunity to give you an update. It's been a busy year in Public Works, and we're anxious to share that with you. We're well represented. I appreciate the support of members of Public Works Department across the landscape, so buckle your seat belts and let's go for a little ride. So today, we're going to take a little road trip, if you will, and I'm going to offer some opening comments here, and then I'll pass it on to some senior division managers to give an update in their areas. And then we'll wrap up that session with the opportunity for you to ask some questions. So FY '17, easily a year, we could say, came at us with some significant challenge. We started the fiscal year with a fair amount of excitement, as we saw our senior management, about three-quarters of the senior management turn over in the first few months of the year. We regrouped, we redesigned, we realigned, we did all the re's possible, and through several promotions and things, we backfilled, and I'm pleased to say that we've got an organization that's working well and moving us forward. Additionally, we faced some of the highest growth the city has ever seen. I think that my records show the third highest in city history. We saw a drastic shift in the regulatory landscape, and that was not only the wastewater that you're familiar with, but also on the waterfront, and we're seeing some additional pressures coming on that area. And we, on top of it, we tackled one of the largest portfolio of projects that our department has seen in some time. And in spite of it all, I believe we were able to meet our department mission, and that is to anticipate, plan, provide exemplary services to the facilities, and support the evolving needs of our community. So I'd be remiss if I didn't take an opportunity to talk about some recent acknowledgements that we made in our department, and that comes through the annual Public Works So the Team Achievement Award, this year went to the Collections Team, and as you may be aware, they were faced with substantial challenges. They had a lot of management turnover, but showed incredible resiliency through the winter and now on, through some significant organizational changes, led by Miguel Espinola, and I know he's here, along with Tony Parks back there. They have pulled up their bootstraps, and they are doing, and have done a tremendous job for the balance of year, and we recognize them as the Team of the Year. Another cross-functional team, which spreads beyond just one division in our organization, we recognize the Struvite and Digestor Team. And Lorelei is going to give you more education on Struvite than maybe what you care to have today, but I just would say that between engineering operations and our maintenance teams, they spent a tremendous amount of effort resolving a problem or a challenge in our Digestor III, and so we acknowledge them as the cross-functional team. Employee of the Year, we come down, we actually ended up with two. We could not decide, you know, amongst many good nominees, but I'm pleased to acknowledge Nate Howell. Nate works in our lab group. He's a rock star out there. He's very good in programming. He's helped us on the integration of our LEMS and WIM systems out there. He's identified many process improvements to our laboratory staff, cost-saving efforts, so just a great effort by Nate. Over in our engineering team, we also recognize Garrick Nelson. Garrick's had one of those exciting years himself, where he's completed his PE licensure, passed his exams, promoted to a staff to engineer, taken on a lot of miscellaneous assignments everywhere, from streetlights to water to wastewater projects. And that diversity, and on top of it all, he's just a tremendous care values advocate, customer service advocate in our department, and is also recognized as an employee of the year. Supervisor of the Year, I know he's here, Tony Bernard. Tony just exudes natural leadership. He runs our maintenance team in the wastewater division, and he is a significant contributor to many of the things that we talk about happening out there. But he motivates, he encourages, he inspires his team, and as such, is recognized as our supervisor of the year in Public Works. And our final award that we added this year was for Project of the Year, and this could be any kind of project, large, small, one that hopefully came to fruition across the past fiscal year. And we just could not let Kyle go without one more acknowledgement of several years of effort in the area of drilling concern and the results of that. And so he was acknowledged, along with, I guess, some assistance from others, but he was really the driving force that brought this thing home. And that effort will protect the water supply of Meridian for years to come through that effort. So great, great team of people, exemplified by these individuals in these awards.
And Dale, before you move on, all of you that were just recognized, will you stand up so we can show you our appreciation?
Thank you. But, you know, we talk about big moments, but it takes more than just the big moments to make success, and, you know, there's thousands of positive activities that happen every day, including things like saving ducklings from the storm drains, and that was a collections team effort there that did that.
You were just trying to outdo the fire department, right?
How did you beat the firemen to that?
We beat the firemen to it, yeah, there you go. No, so anyway, so that's a great thing, you know. Success also takes foresight, and only a water guy would think to scamper up the 137 steps to the top of the water tower to capture an event that may be the only time we get a chance to see that here in Meridian, and that is take a photo of the eclipse while it was occurring from a very amazing vantage point, and many in the city enjoyed this particular picture. And the next one, this one brings a tear to my eye. No, really. This thing stinks so bad that it's the only thing that could make you cry and puke at the same time.
This is a giant hairball.
Not everything we do is delightful, but I appreciate those that are willing to do the tough jobs. And I'm telling you, this is a tough job, and this beauty really put the city on the map.
It really did. We were proud of that one.
So there's just a couple of the moments that we reflect back on as we look past the last year here. So we're going to, I'm going to pass it on here to some other division leaders here pretty quick, but here's the format. So as you would expect, fairly intuitive here, but we're going to talk a little bit about what's behind us, the rearview mirror kind of thought, current initiatives that are being faced in our divisions, what's outside our windows today, if you will, and then an opportunity in those specific areas to look down the road a little bit and see what's coming and share that with you. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Lorelei McVeigh, who's our deputy director of utility operations.
Perfect. Thanks, Dale. So we've had a really exciting year of progress in the utility section, including some significant new events, like the first permit in 13 years, new challenges, like Dale talked about, the massive construction and unprecedented growth, and some crazy challenges from our environment as well. So I'm excited to get to tell you guys about the progress that our utility section has made despite the many challenges that we face. We also get to do some fun things once in a while, like entertaining, I mean, educating the council. We do want to thank you guys, for those of you who are able to make it out to our busy construction site, and the offer still stands. If you weren't able to come out, we'd love to still have you out there. So our first major milestone that I'd like to cover is the arrival of our long-awaited NPDS permit. So the permit went live in August. This is the first new requirements we've had in 18 years, and I'm proud to say that it's been a smooth, seamless transition, thanks to our amazing staff and the many years of planning and preparation. The lab specifically, thanks to the new building, the new equipment, and the new software systems, all approved by the council, has helped us transition and achieve 100% compliance so far. We've implemented impressive new software systems, those are screenshots of a few of them, that greatly help us increase efficiency and accuracy of the data. With your support, we implemented WIMS and LEMS, which converted copious amounts of paper copies all to electronic data available at the click of a button, automatic transfer of data from SCADA in the lab. I'm continually impressed with the amazing in-house talent that this group has, the ability to implement this software, and also complete several important studies and permit required documents. We've talked about a few of these with you previously, but these are reports that were completed in-house that would have previously been contracted out. These were completed with exceptional quality and saved the city tens of thousands of dollars by doing them in-house. Some examples are the Reuse Annual Report, the BizThalite Study, and the Emergency Response Plan. Another significant challenge that was faced by our groups this year was last year's heavy winter. So significant efforts were made by the entire water division to keep the sidewalks and storm drains clear. With the help of parks, fire, and police, we all did the best job we could to keep the sidewalks and roads clear for residents and schools. However, the snow-packed storm drains caused us significant challenges at the treatment plant when we experienced rapid snow melt. So as the snow melted, so imagine this flow going into this manhole, times almost 11,000 manholes, we knew that as this ice-cold water headed towards the plant, we were going to have a problem. So we received over 60 MGD all at once at the treatment plant that night, and the facility is designed to treat 10. So you'll see that spike in the circle in red, that was that evening. Our staff stayed all night long. We had to bypass directly into the UV system, completely bypassing the entire treatment plant, but we were able to minimize and avert a serious environmental disaster. So preparations are already underway for this year's winter. Hopefully, it's not as bad.
No, we just learned a lot, so we'll be smarter.
Right. Another challenge that was overcome with excellent results was our Struvite issue that Dale talked about. So you've heard us talk quite a lot about Struvite over the years, so I figured I'd tell you a little bit about what it is. So Struvite is made up of phosphorus, ammonia, and magnesium, and as we move to remove more of the phosphorus from going out the effluent, it has to go somewhere, and where it goes is our solid stream in places like our digestors. So when the combination of those three elements are just right, and the conditions are just right, which happens to be our digestors, our pumps, and piping, the Struvite crystals form. As you can see from the photos, it drastically reduces the pipe capacity, even in some places plugging it completely. It ruins equipment and causes us serious operational problems. So to get rid of Struvite, we're focusing on long-term permanent solutions, which you'll see in the next few years in the CIP portfolio. It's called side-stream treatment. However, in the short term, we have been forced to be pioneering and find new and innovative ways to mitigate the Struvite problem. This year, we tried two new technologies, a chemical treatment and an electronic device that changes the conditions in the pipe with great success. So the Struvite issue consumed over 400 man-hours over a period of seven months for us to deal with this year, so a significant strain on our operations. But with innovations found by our staff, like the two that I talked about, it allows us to keep moving forward until the longer-term solutions can be constructed. We've also had great success implementing innovative mobile solutions with the help of our internal city IT group that have resulted in better efficiency, effectiveness, and improved customer service. The IT group developed in-house a vehicle locating program that allows us to view our mobile fleet in real time. This allows us to better strategically dispatch crews to issues and assist customers. However, the real efficiency in this program is the devices that provide our field staff with connectivity to the city network when they're out in the field. It allows them to complete work orders, service reads, and collect data seamlessly in the field. A big part of this mobile solution has allowed us to make our pre-treatment inspection process completely mobile, which has greatly increased the efficiency of this work group. They can look up business files, reports, and have access to their database all in the field without having to return to the treatment plant after every site visit. On the water side, we've increased efficiency and accuracy in several of our program areas as well, one of those being backflow. The backflow program has implemented a new software platform, which has eliminated double entry and has tied this program into our billing system. The backflow program is a critical piece to keep our water infrastructure protected. We've also completed another stage of asset management, asset identification on the water side, so as we collected GPS more of these assets, it gives us a better ability to maintain and protect our system. And then the UBS system has been fully implemented and operational for a year. So this is a huge effort to bring our billing system and our staff utility reading system onto one platform. It created real-time paperless service orders and billing information that improved efficiencies, communication, and customer service internally and also externally to our customers. This was a huge, huge effort from our water team, asset management team, and MUBS team. So we've also made significant strides in our collections program, and we promised you an update on this. So we received our new hydro cleaner right before Christmas. However, right before Christmas, we also received a severe winter. This winter prevented us from really getting the new cleaner out and running until about March. We've also, as Dale mentioned, had some significant staff turnover and changes during this period, which affected our production. So we've had five staff leave, four new hires, and two promotions during this period, all within a team of eight guys. So however, even with these challenges, the group has really persevered. That's why they won the Team of the Year. And since the beginning of this year, we've cleaned 35 miles of pipe and CCTV'd 29 miles. And our goals for 2018 are to maintain a full group of staff and all four running trucks, and are aiming to clean 109 miles and CCTV 66 miles, which I know we'll be able to accomplish.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Clerk.
Real quick, on that point, I think the standard to, the whole city to be cleaned every two years or 2.2, are we now on that pace?
Councilman Borton, that's a great question. So we are not quite yet because we have not had full staff. We are just barely at that point, but this coming year, starting, well, this October through next October, if we meet those cleaning goals, we'll be back on schedule.
Okay, thanks.
So we've had also a great year, moving forward, our safety program. So our safety program coordinator, Tim, is now certified to provide many of the required trainings to our staff, saving time and money and improving the quality of training that we receive. We've implemented new safer equipment, along with the training, which has continued to increase safety awareness and practices by our employees. We implemented a new mobile SDS program, so our staff can have access and information to the chemicals that they work with at any time or any location. And we also had a fun safety logo contest, which you'll see up there on the screen, which was won by one of our wastewater operators, Johnny.
Nice.
So another true success for us is the quality of the employees in the utilities. These staff members, as Dale mentioned, perform day in and day out, doing important, complex, and sometimes really dirty jobs. A few of them have received state and local recognition. Licensor is also a big deal for our staff. We're required in our field to hold professional licenses, and we've had multiple staff members receive new licenses or higher-level licenses. So as you can see, we had a very big, very busy year in the utilities, and now I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about some of the ongoing projects and initiatives that are currently underway. So as Dale mentioned, growth continues to drive the projects in our utilities. So as the city continues to expand, we're challenged on both the water and wastewater sides to keep up. We have pressures from new regulations, especially on the water side, as our population exceeds 100,000. It triggers new regulations, such as additional sampling and corrosion control studies, which we'll be completing this next year. We continue to strive to provide excellent quality of water and customer service, but again, are challenged as the city continues to add more infrastructure, more miles of pipe, more residents. However, we do have significant projects underway on the water treatment facilities that help us maintain and improve our water quality. However, learning how to optimize these new facilities and technology is an ongoing effort for our staff. Another major initiative for us is our SCADA program. So SCADA is a critical system that's required for compliance, protecting public health, the environment, and critical equipment. It's our central control center, so it brings in all the critical data from our sites and allows us to control a complex system remotely. If we didn't have SCADA, we would have to significantly increase the staffing to have people go out and manually check all of these pieces of equipment every day. This program touches nearly every asset in our facilities. So as our SCADA system has grown over the years, we've really fallen behind on resourcing this program from a day-to-day operation standpoint. We currently only have one staff member on board to operate, maintain, and update this critical program. So we're taking a step back to look at this, look at the resources that are needed, develop this as a program, and our initial analysis has shown that we're severely understaffed in the area of SCADA. We're currently spending significant amounts of money on consultants to bridge this gap. Once we complete this analysis this spring, we plan on bringing that information back to you guys and updating you to let you know what type of resources are needed for this program. Our reuse permit is currently out for public comment and will be renewed. Nothing major has changed on it, and they're actually looking at renewing it for a 10-year cycle. Additionally, on the Idaho power side for the power line buyout, we've received the initial buyout agreement, and it's currently being reviewed by our legal teams, and we're still anticipating ownership in early 2018. And just a reminder, this is a really critical project, timing-wise, because the two new big expansion projects do not have power until we get this agreement executed. So we have a couple of objectives that are on the horizon that will have significant impacts to the utilities in the coming year. As many of you saw on our construction... Additionally, on the Idaho power side for the power line buyout, we've received the initial buyout agreement, and it's currently being reviewed by our legal teams. And we're still anticipating ownership in early 2018. And just a reminder, this is a really critical project, timing-wise, because the two new big expansion projects do not have power until we get this agreement executed. So we have a couple of objectives that are on the horizon that will have significant impacts to the utilities in the coming year. As many of you saw on our construction tour, we're in for some really big changes out at the wastewater side of the utility. We're doubling our assets on the site, and we'll have the unique challenge of operating two treatment facilities. Additionally, during that time period, our permit limits will continue to get more and more stringent. With all of these changes, we obviously need staff to support this massive, complex expansion. And we'll need to move to 24/7 staffing sooner than later. We can't leave a facility of this size without 24/7 operation for much longer. And to do that, we obviously need more staff and shifts in our operations and maintenance groups. Another challenge that we'll face in the next few years is the renewal of our NPDS permit. I know it feels like we just barely got it, which we did, but they come up for renewal every five years, so we'll see a renewal in 2022. This could bring new limits, new monitoring, and new requirements that we have no way of really predicting what those are today, but we are staying actively engaged in that process, and we'll bring you guys updates as we receive them. On the water side of the house, our challenge continues to be around improving brown water issues. So I wanted to take a minute to explain to you guys the brown water cycle, what causes it, and why it continues to impact us. So iron and manganese occur naturally in our aquifer. It's dissolved, which means that you wouldn't be able to see it under normal conditions. However, when we pump the water from the aquifer, we're required to add chlorine to it. And when you add chlorine, the iron and manganese precipitates out, and it settles to the bottom of the pipes. So this poses a couple of challenges for us. It takes up capacity in the pipes, and then when we flush the system, which is required by DEQ, it stirs, or have construction projects, it stirs up the sediment, which makes its way into people's homes. While it's non-toxic, it's definitely unsightly and below the expectations that our customers have. So to remove this issue, we have to have a two-pronged approach. Otherwise, you just keep pumping iron and manganese out of the aquifer and into the system. So the two-pronged approach first includes installing treatment facilities. So like I said, unless you install these facilities to actually remove the iron and manganese from the water, you'll continue to have the issue. We've successfully completed three of these treatment facilities and have several more planned for the next few years. However, these are not cheap and take several years to design and build. Another important prong to the approach is the implementation of a unidirectional flushing program. So we have years and years of buildup in our system, and the only way to completely remove it is to strategically turn valves to ensure a one-way flush of the whole system. This may sound pretty simple, but with the thousands and thousands of valves in our system, it's actually pretty extensive planning, takes equipment and staffing. So with the addition of the treatment facilities and the unidirectional flushing program, we should be able to significantly reduce the brown water issues in Meridian. However, like I said, both of these take time and resources, both personnel and capital, to complete, but they're underway in our planning efforts. So as you can see on the utility side, we've had a tremendous year of accomplishments, of progress, but we still have quite a few important initiatives to keep our plates full. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Warren Stewart to speak about the capital projects and engineering side.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Well, Laureli's up here. I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Can you just share with us a little bit about this, moving to a 24-hour staffing structure, and how many employees you think that's going to require, when you would estimate that that would need to occur? As a first, I've heard of this, and so it definitely stuck with me very quickly.
Yes. Councilman Cavanagh, that's a great question. So we are working on analyzing that. I don't have a specific number for you today, but we're actually looking at a phased approach, so it wouldn't just happen overnight. We'd strategically add a few staff members, gradually reduce that amount of time that the facility is understaffed, to eventually reach full 24/7 staffing in 2020 is our goal.
Madam Mayor, additional question. You touched on the brown water, and I don't know if, I'm just hearing about it more, or if we're experiencing it more, or somewhere in between. And I'm just curious if Public Works has had discussions, I don't know, with MUBS, with the mayor's office, about responses that we can provide our citizens who are experiencing this? I know that I've seen a lot more commentary about it on social media and when I've been connecting with our citizens, and I'm just curious if, I love that we are taking an approach on what we can do to prevent it from happening, but do we have a response in place for when our citizens experience it today?
That's a, Councilman Cavanagh, that's a great question and comment. So we have put together, and Alex will touch on it a little bit in his presentation, but a call map that's allowing us to pinpoint the types of calls, which will allow us to better strategically put these treatment facilities, do the flushing programs. We've really stepped up efforts in outreach and notification, utilizing social media, the Nextdoor app, to try to get that information out to the residents that we have to flush our system twice per year, and when we do that is when it stirs up the sediment. So we really want to continue that effort, want to continue to put together possibly information on our website or literature that we'd be able to give to customers to let them know that, you know, the water is still safe, it just doesn't look great, you know, here are some things that you can do to flush it out of your house, things to avoid when the flushing is happening, like laundry and that type of thing.
Laureli's kind of tough to follow, but I'll do the best I can. I'm going to follow sort of the same format that she did and talk a little bit about the past, present, and the future situation that we have within the division. So first, want to talk about an accomplishment that may be slightly out of the ordinary or one that you wouldn't normally think of, but the Public Works Department was proud to bring the movie Dream Big to high school students in the Treasure Valley. While we were preparing to do our Public Works Week activities, this announcement that this movie was going to be produced by the American Society of Civil Engineers in conjunction with Bechtel Corporation and Hollywood movie producers came out. We were hoping to be able to bring this movie and show it at that particular time, but due to logistical reasons, we weren't able to bring the movie to the Public Works Week. But we have worked with our high schools and our consultants, the ASCE and the Village Cinemas, over the past few months, and were able to bring this movie to the theaters just a few weeks ago, where we had over 400 high school students from the Treasure Valley watch the 45-minute production. The intent of the movie was to inspire young men and young women to take up careers in engineering-related fields. The feedback that we received was very positive, both from the teachers and the students. And two young ladies who watched the movie even commented that they were going to change their career path and go towards engineering based on what they had seen in the movie. You may ask, why would we be interested, or why would we do that? Well, the bottom line is, it's somewhat selfish. We have had a difficulty as a city, as well as engineering firms across the valley, attracting a good volume of quality individuals to fill our open positions. We've been able to do that, but sometimes it's taken a long time to fill vacant positions in the engineering-related fields, and I know that other engineering firms are going through the same thing. So our hope is to be able to, in the future, to attract and interest enough people that in the future we'll be able to get highly qualified, talented people to work for the city, to design and construct the infrastructure that we'll need to serve the city into the future. I want to take a moment to thank two of our sponsors, which was JUV and Keller Engineers, whose financial donations made it possible to obtain the movie and the venue, and also to thank both Aubrey Plots and Dean Stacey for their coordination of this event. And I think, we hope to be able to do this again in the future and provide this opportunity to students. We think it was very valuable, and the feedback we got was extremely positive. Next, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about some of the projects that we were involved in. About this past year, we finished the UV disinfection project at the wastewater treatment plant. This project was the unit process with the smallest capacity up until this project occurred. Now we have a quality project that will serve the city for many years into the future. We had a few challenges along the way, but we were able to overcome those, and this project actually came in under budget. We also completed the installation of several programmable logic controllers for both the water and wastewater facilities. These components are part of the brains that Laureli talked about in the SCADA system and are going to allow us to utilize and communicate with those remote facilities from our SCADA systems in our operations facilities. We also purchased and implemented new software that would help us to prioritize mainline replacements in our sewer system. And Kyle and his team were busy with the ADC project, as well as Water Rights Project, trying to protect our water rights and our source water for the city. And the water rights efforts that they were able to do will provide us with a lot of flexibility in how we're able to utilize our wells and provide service to our citizens in the future. We also added a treatment system to well 27 to improve water quality. That makes three treatment plants, as Laureli mentioned, that are in service, and two more in the design phase. These plans, coupled with the unidirectional flushing program, will greatly improve water quality throughout the system. Additionally, we completed several mainline and lift station projects to add capacity to our system and replace old and deteriorating infrastructure. Our inspections team provided inspections on over 105 projects during this past year. That is a really outstanding effort when you consider that there were a significant portion of the year where there were only four inspectors. Our engineering team also played an important role in negotiating our NPDS permit that Laureli spoke about. The wastewater engineering team also completed a new sewer master plan for our collection system. 2017 was also significant, a significant year for our street lighting projects. In addition to an intersection improvement project, where we added lighting in neighborhoods that had close proximity to schools, we also teamed up with ACHD to add streetlights to the Settlers Park area with the Eustick and Meridian Road project, and also down Franklin Road, associated with the Franklin Road street lighting project. Now we're going to take a little look at current initiatives. So the wastewater treatment plant and the capacity expansion project that's going on there is, you know, going to dominate things for the next couple of years. However, this is just one of several projects that are taking place at the wastewater treatment plant right now. The headworks expansion projects, the Centrate project, and the Boise River Outfall Pump Station project are also under construction. So they're really four major projects taking place out there all at the same time.
Warren.
Yes.
I heard you were starting a beach out there.
No, we're just trying to make the ground stable. Outside the treatment plant, we are designing and constructing several mainline extension replacements, the most significant of which is the South Meridian project, which I will talk to you a little bit more about in the near future. Or actually, not in the near future, in just a few minutes, but. The final phase of construction on well 30 and 29 is progressing rapidly. These new wells will provide water in Pressure Zones 1 and 5, and well 32 is also in the final phases of design and will be completed in 2018. These new wells will allow for development in the northwest and south portions of Meridian. Water quality, as we've already touched on, is an area we're focusing a lot of attention. We're in the final design phase of a treatment facility for well 22, which is in Bear Creek Park. Not only will this new facility provide improved water quality for the residents in that area, but it's also going to improve water quality for Roaring Springs, which has also been a challenge for us over the years. We've decided, we've started design work on a treatment facility for well 28, which is near Black Rock. When complete, this will be the fifth well to receive a treatment plant. These systems, in combination with our move towards interdirectional flushing, will greatly improve our water quality, like we've talked about. We are also in the process of developing a new facility plan for our wastewater treatment plant that will guide our growth for the next five years and beyond. We are also involved in two grant-funded street lighting projects. One is a CDBG grant that will improve street lighting in areas around schools, and the other one is a joint project with ACHD that will provide street lighting on Cherry Lane between Meridian Road and Linder, which actually goes by Meridian Middle School. All right, we're going to take some time and look ahead here just a minute and talk about some things that are challenges in the future. As I stated, the capacity expansion and headworks project will be ongoing for the next couple of years. But in addition, we'll be designing, constructing a side-stream treatment process that will help to remove phosphorus in our system. This is one of those things that's going to help to minimize struvite formation in our wastewater treatment plant operations. Our final, to meet our final permit limits, we're also going to have to enhance our filtration capacity out at the wastewater treatment plant before we can discharge to Five Mile Creek. Another emerging issue for us is access at the wastewater treatment plant itself. As the wastewater treatment plant grows and we add new buildings to the treatment plant, a secondary access for emergency services as well as for operations will be required. And I think Dale spoke with you a little bit about that here a few weeks ago. We are also watching the development of the Boise River TMDL trading framework, as this will have an impact on our reclaimed water program. The rapid pace of new development is increasing the cost of construction, along with increasing our inspection workload, and we are seeing that in the bids that are coming forward. Water rights and water rights mitigation is also a concern. Our ability to deliver water during years of drought, which will certainly come, is a major concern, and we are taking steps to make sure that we are able to provide the services necessary into the future. Long-term infrastructure replacement is another challenge. Many cities across the nation are struggling with this issue. Recently, I read an article where one of the cities here in the US was facing a situation where they were challenged with over 400 mainline breaks a day. I can't even imagine the amount of resources and money that putting that many Band-Aids on a system costs. And so we're working to make sure that we have a plan so that the citizens of Meridian, years down the road, are not faced with a similar situation, and that we can adequately tackle and address this issue before it becomes an insurmountable problem for us. So we'll be coming back to you with a little bit more information with regards to that in the future. Looking ahead, also, I'm going to talk a little bit about South Meridian issues now. The sewer line down Meridian Road from the Rydenbaugh Canal through the Simplot property and through the Citadel property, and ultimately back across Meridian Road, has been a challenge, but it is out to bid. And we anticipate construction will begin before the end of the year. It took over a year for us to negotiate the easements associated with that sewer line. And we are very glad that we have finally got it to this point. As you can see also, though, we are going to be constructing two new water lines in the next couple of years, as well as in year 19, finishing with the final phase of the sewer line project down Linder Road. After these projects are completed, this will complete essentially the infrastructure improvements that were the city committed to accomplishing a couple of years ago. So those are the projects that are left in the years that they're going to be completed in, and we're underway to make sure that all those happen. Fortunately, with the other projects, we're not required to obtain any easements. They'll be in public right away, so that'll help. Now I want to talk to you about sort of an emerging issue. The Victory Road Sewer Shed, which is what you see here on the map, is going to present some challenges for us going forward. The topography of this land essentially flows from the right-hand side to the left. In other words, it flows back towards the left-hand side of the page. There's already significant pressure for development on the right-hand side, or the upper end of the drainage basin. But the infrastructure that serves this drainage basin actually, which is this lift station over here on the far-left side and the trunk sewer line that gets all the effluent back to the plant, doesn't currently exist. So we have an interim plan. There we go. So to address this in the short term, we will allow for the installation of three So, to address this in the short term, we will allow for the installation of three temporary lift stations, small lift stations, that will pump back up over the hill into the drainage basins to the north. However, this is simply borrowing capacity from that drainage basin, which will ultimately be needed to serve that area. So, this is just a temporary solution, and we'll need, we'll need to implement the long-term solution before the capacity is needed elsewhere. So, I wanted to take just a moment and talk about what it's going to take to accomplish that. So, this is a picture of the McDermott Road Trunk Sewer Line, which essentially goes from where the Oaks Lift Station is now. That's the, the lift station at the top of the page, which is listed as North McDermott Lift Station. That is an interim lift station that currently exists that will have to be upgraded. But the trunk sewer line that will run from there to the south, across the interstate, eventually to this South McDermott Lift Station, which is the one that does not exist, and the sewer line that, that runs from there to pick off the last of the, the little temporary lift stations which will allow, is shown on this map. That McDermott Trunk Sewer Line is a $15 million project. The lift station in Forest Main are estimated at $3.6 million, and the Victory Sewer needed to pick off that last temporary lift station is $1.6 million. Of course, we can't do all that in one fell swoop. We know that that's going to have to be phased in, but it is going to be important that we start that work in the not-too-distant future. Our newly revised master plan and updated CIP have broken this McDermott Road Trunk Line project into a seven-year phased project that will start in 2025. The effort to build this infrastructure will significantly impact our budget during that timeframe. One of the other things that's important to note is that the, because there are no large parcels along this path, it is unlikely that development will pay for any of this. So, this is something that we're going to have to address as a city moving forward if we want to provide service to this drainage basin. And it's a significant issue. We'll be providing more information and updates to you in the near future. But as you can see, we're busy planning and constructing and trying to figure out how we're going to provide both on the water side and the wastewater side, the infrastructure necessary to support the growth and development that the city is seeing, but there are challenges. And some of those challenges come with some fairly significant price tags, and we'll be working with you and talking with you more about that in, in the future. I'm going to turn the time back over to Alex at this point, so he can talk about some other issues and concerns, as we'll be bringing most of this stuff back to you in another format in the future.
Thank you, Warren.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
How's everybody doing? We're getting there, I promise. I'm here to talk a little bit about the Business Division and our accomplishments over the last part of the year. On the financial front, we completed the FY18 budget process. We also just completed the 10-year CFP. Both efforts were large, involved, took a long time, and my thanks to our utility analyst, Connie Moon, for the work that she did on that. We also completed a review of the department's service fee schedule. This update, this updated all of our service-related fees to ensure proper level of cost recovery is occurring on our fees, and it also now aligns those fees with the city's annual timeline for regular fee updates. The asset management team completed Phase 4 of the Water Asset Program. This effort worked primarily on management processes for many of our water distribution assets in the city, such as lines, hydrants, and pressure relief valves. This is enabling us to kind of take asset management from just collecting data and assigning work orders and, and PMs to assets, to being able to actually start to cost account against manpower, resources, and, and future planning. The GIS team was able to create the water quality call mapping. Councilman Cavanagh, to your question earlier, if you look at that image on the left there, that's an example.
Yeah, sure.
That's an example of that, that application right there. We can now plot, display on command all customer concerns by various criteria, such as type, location, and frequency. So, that should help our Water Division quite a bit on that front. We conducted outreach meetings for the upcoming proposed FEMA map changes on Non-Mile Creek. This was a chance to kind of talk with the public about proposed floodplain changes, answer questions, all ahead of what we expect will be potential implementation of that plan in 2018. You might remember our environmental coordinator was before you last month to outline our new revitalized Environmental Excellence Awards Program to help recognize those entities in the community that are helping to make Meridian sustainable, healthy, and a premier community. Our capital projects and facilities team completed or supported 11 capital projects here just in our city facilities and responded to over 1,250 cases regarding customer concerns. So, moving into some of the current initiatives our team is working on, we're working on updating our rate model. We were, you might remember, we were before you back in the springtime where we talked a little bit about where that model was at. With the new CFP completed, we're finalizing our current efforts with work from our utility analyst. We expect to come before you and conduct the second part of that discussion, which will provide our latest projections and potential impacts to the utility rates and fees. So, stay tuned on that, but as you can see on this chart here, that's a picture of the rate model. Those last couple of years will probably be a point of discussion as we, as we move into those conversations. Another project that we have in motion is an update to the city code with regard to how we calculate connection fees for our commercial customers. So, a review of commercial class types, methodologies, and what is right for Meridian and its customers is also going to be expected outcomes from that effort. Our asset management team will move into Water Asset Phase 5. That will capture additional thousands of pieces of water infrastructure that we put into our asset management program. Our manhole assessment certification program interface replacement, talk just a moment about this. The manhole assessment certification program is essentially part of a national standard that allows the city to, to apply standards to how it inspects and identifies defects and maintenance in those assets. This is a pretty exciting improvement for that team. Currently, when the field collections guys collect that data, it's a fairly cumbersome process for them to take that data and move it from the field software to our asset management software. It involves the working of a third-party interface. We're going to move all that to in-house, and in addition to increasing the efficiency on that, we're also going to save the cost of having to pay that third-party software management agreement. So, it's a win-win for us on that, so efficiency and cost savings. Our GIS team will continue to work on layer improvements to our GIS mapping to provide further accuracy and visibility to the infrastructure in the city. We've, we'd like to thank IT for some assistance in helping us develop a department-wide tactical plan database. They stole the database that the city is currently using for the strategic plan and reworked it for us, and we are now able to put all 18 of our department-level tactics into that database to help us with tracking that. Great reuse of a, a resource that we already had out there, so again, thanks to them for that. We're working on devoting efforts to department-wide to further define what we mean when we talk about level of service as well. Establishing what that standard is now and what we expect a level of service standard to be in the future. And then, once we have that, we can distill that down into meaningful, meaningful performance metrics that we use to drive our business positively and improve those levels of service. We also now have a working draft of our Public Works Department Communications Plan. Our communication specialist has been hard at work defining how we communicate with our customers, goals to meet, and how to improve standards and tools we use for everything from quality complaints to public outreach events. So, just taking a look ahead, obviously, on the fiscal front, before we all know it, FY19 budget process will start. Always seems like we're in a budget cycle somehow. We're going to have to address a forecasted funding gap. That goes back to the rate model discussions that we'll have with you, and I pulled that picture back up again. You can see there at the, the end of that 10-year period, we're relatively certain that we're going to have some kind of deficit there that we're going to have to address as we go forward. And in this last bullet, I mentioned funding strategic investments. If you look at that chart, you'll see that the ending fund balance hugs that solvency line pretty close through the, the next six, seven, eight years. That really gives us very little tolerance for emergencies, for maybe strategic investment opportunities that come along. And so, the analogy we've been thinking of is that's sort of the enterprise fund living paycheck to paycheck during that time period. When an unforeseen opportunity comes along, we might not have the cash on hand to take advantage of that. Situations we might want to take advantage of would be perhaps securing additional water supply for future generations, or taking advantage of certain land acquisitions as those opportunities become available. The flexibility in being able to leverage some of those kinds of opportunities when they may be far less expensive for the city and may alleviate future challenges is not to be underestimated. We're also going to be working on fleet management. The Public Works Department has over 50 vehicles just in our department. We recognize that the management of these assets requires more effort and cost every year, so we're looking into where efficiencies and standardization across the department can be exploited. One of the first things we hope to address on that in the upcoming budget cycle is a more defined and standardized approach to how we evaluate and decide when vehicle replacements are needed for the department. We continue to implement a philosophy of continuous improvement in the Public Works Department, so we'll need to further define what metrics we collect to use and make changes to our processes to ensure we are exhausting every efficiency and resource on the expense side of the equation before we resort to looking at revenue changes. Our environmental programs will focus on conservation and sustainability efforts to support an eco-friendly approach to everything we do. And finally, on workforce development, we remain committed to our most valuable resource in the department, which is our people. We look forward to our next class of leadership development candidates. This is going to be our fifth leadership development class that we're able to do in the upcoming year. This is an evolving program that we customize for each group of participants, and it allows us to immerse them in a culture of continuous improvement, impart the ideals of Public Works, our mission, our goals, and focus on how every staff member in the department has a role to play in problem-solving, efficiency, and leadership. So, that's a little bit about Business Division. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to our director, Dale.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
One question real quick on the, the cliff graph, so to speak. Is the, do you anticipate the, the concept being brought forward that the, the emergency reserves of, I think it's $10 million, the delta reflected there, that that expands, or we should utilize a different, additional type of reserve?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Councilman Borden, it's an excellent question. I'm not sure I've got the right answer for you just yet. That, that would be certainly one of the things we could look at. We are also going to try to bring forward options in, in multiple ideas about whether or not an indexed rate approach might be the way to handle that. Currently, we don't update our rates every single year, and it's already been almost four years since we've, we've raised our rates last time, so we're running the analysis now to determine whether or not, what those, those pictures look like.
Okay.
So...
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned. Yep, yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Thank you, Alex, Lorelei, and Warren for the updates and divisions. So, I'm going to take us home here in the next couple of minutes, but before, before we completely wrap it up, I, I want to give you, we've been on a little bit of road trip here through, through the various areas, but I want to kind of step it up, and I want to take a look at the public works world 10 years out. So, let's, let's take a little journey to 2027.
You need the sound as part of that.
That's a Jetsons for those of you who don't remember. The, so, what does the, what does the city look like in, in 10 years out? What about our utilities? I've got a couple of fun benchmarks to take a look at and share with you here. So, how about the city? Well, just looking at some of the common metrics, we're going to add about 40,000 people to our city over the next 10 years. And for those of you who like analogies, that's adding 3 1/2 garden cities on top of our current population in the city of Meridian. About 12,000 dwelling units, we're adding about seven square miles to our city limits. And as you can see, the mayor will be, just be completing her sixth term in 2027. How about our water utility? Almost 14,000 new accounts, additional water pumped in a year, 1.6 billion gallons more water needed in a year. So, I was trying to figure out how to drive that point home and just how much is 1.6 billion. So, if you took 3,200 water towers and lined them up side by each, as we would say in Wisconsin, you would end up with a row of towers 60 miles long. That's how much more water we're going to be pumping on an annual basis. So, I hope that, that leaves a little visual. That's to Wilder and back, if you're interested. 170 miles of water line that takes you from Meridian to Cascade and back home again. That's how much water line we're going to lay between now and then. Five additional wells, five additional treatment facilities, and thousands and thousands of valves being added to the system. On the wastewater side, you look at about that similar 14,000 accounts, 3.5 million gallons per day is what, in addition to what we're seeing today. So, we'll be approaching 11 million gallons a day headed to our waste treatment plant. That's equal to 2 million toilet flushes a day that, in ex, in extra volume headed that way. 144 miles of sewer trunk, which is a small journey from Meridian to Twin Falls. Four to 5,000 more manholes, hopefully not filling with water like we saw from Snowmageddon. The additional aeration basins to process, that's the biological part of the waste treatment plant. We'll, we'll add 150,000 pounds of more microscopic bugs eating, eating away in our biological process. And as you've heard, not only are we looking forward to one more permit, but by 2027, we'll have had two more rounds of our NPDS permit.
Hi, do you know that Pac-Man? Was that around?
Now, you know why we have 66-inch pipe out there going in the ground.
Madam Mayor, there's one out at Boondocks, or whatever it's called now, Wahoos.
Oh.
It was a big Pac-Man game.
We may have to deploy that for our, for our benefit.
I thought maybe that was just aging you, but I guess it's still around.
It's still around. So, in order to get where we need to be and support the city in 2027, we must plan now. This is our planning horizon. And so, what do we estimate today? Well, our CFP portfolio shows about $200 million in capital and replacement costs to support that 2027 vision, and that does include the initiation of that McDermott Trunk Line and some of the things that we've talked about here today. We estimate about 32 FTEs in our department. Those are boots-on-the-ground employees supporting 24/7 operation and waste treatment in many of the other areas where we just see support and the growth required. Uncertainty of regulations. We think we understand what's coming on some fronts, but certainly, we do not have the full picture of what, what regulations we'll be facing 10 years from now. And the growth numbers in our plan, quite frankly, are conservative. We have a history now, the last several years, of exceeding those growth numbers, and so that'll only challenge us further. So, hopefully, it gives you an idea of kind of what we're looking at, you know, today and, and longer term as we're planning. And although this is the kind of stuff that keeps us up at night, we are excited to, to face that challenge, and I am confident that this Public Works team can get us where we need to be. So, with that, I want to take one quick moment. Thanks, Susie, for putting together our presentation. She works tirelessly to help us pull this all together, so thank you, Susie, and I'd be glad to stand for any questions.
Council, any questions?
Fantastic.
I think they were asked along the way.
Appreciate that.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Borden.
Just one. I didn't quite catch, what is it they say in Wisconsin? Side by what?
Side by each. You know, next to each other.
Side by each.
Side by each.
Side by each.
I was only there two years, but I picked it up. Thank you, Council.
Okay, thank you for all you do. We greatly appreciate it. Okay, item 7C is under our billing division. Okay, item 7C is under our building division.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I would like to thank you for your time to listen to me discuss the overview and the timeline for the building code adoption. As you know, the building codes in Meridian, there's quite a few of them, close to eight. And the codes, to give you a little bit of background, I'll keep this fairly short. They run on a three-year cycle. So all of the building codes, they're all different years based on the model of the code and when it initially was adopted. And so summer 2012, summer 2015, there's a couple that are 2017, but it happens on a three-year cycle, and there's a solid process for what is the best for the state of Idaho. Part of that process is the public hearings per Idaho statute through the negotiated rulemaking process. There's a lot of participation by the public at large. There is participation from area jurisdictions, area code officials, and then you've got the Idaho Building Code Collaborative. That Building Code Collaborative Board amends and recommends changes to the code process after seeking that participation and varying views from the public at large and the area professionals. And it ends up with a package of codes that it presents to the House Committee during the first regular session for building code adoption. So that's kind of a sneak peek about how the building codes get vetted for what is best for Idaho. There is a thorough process, and there's a lot of input. Once that happens, then it becomes, by Idaho statute, the area municipalities adopt these codes January 1st, following the year that the state adopts. So essentially, the draft ordinance before you is 32 pages, the building code. Exciting, isn't it? 32 pages, but in those 32 pages, there is probably eight codes all wrapped into that package. A lot of it is housekeeping for our local amendments, but then we've got some changes that we're doing to follow the state in its adoption with the International Building Code, the Idaho Residential Code, Energy Code, Electrical Code, some of those. Currently, Sam Zahorka has helped me do this work. He's been a great asset and valued opinion. He is at the BCA presenting the same information for us. And I guess at this point, I would like to see if you have any questions to go through these 32 pages. I don't know what level of detail. I don't want to go through at all. I will tell you that the packages that are in front of you, that you received, I believe, last Thursday, there's been some changes already. It's a draft copy, and those changes are just cleanups, some errors, some things that we said, whoops, we deleted that and we didn't want to delete it. But I will tell you that everything that is contained in these 32 pages is state minimum code. We're not making any changes that would be more restrictive, and our local amendments are just getting shorter, and we're cleaning up, keeping it simple. 32 pages, simple. But I'm willing to stand for questions, and we can talk through this if you'd like, to whatever extent you feel comfortable with.
Okay, Counsel.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, you mentioned BCA. Are they, do they have any opinions on anything that we are doing that were above and beyond the minimum that we have to do?
Madam Mayor, members of council, Councilman Palmer, I have attended the BCA. I attend every month. In the last three months in a row, I've let them know that, you know, this is a work in progress, so they're aware of. Per Idaho statute, we have to notice the BCA and probably 25 other organizations, which we will do tomorrow. Per Idaho statute, those mailers are going to go out with the draft copy before you, the updated draft copy. And so I'll discuss the timeline here with you two before we close up, just a brief timeline that's a proposal, and look to your recommendations. But yes, the BCA is aware. They don't oppose in any way. Therefore, because we're following the state minimum, it's been vetted already.
Other questions from counsel? Guess not at this time.
The timeline, just in a snapshot, I don't think you have the timeline. What we're looking at is mailers tomorrow are going out per Idaho Code Section 394116, which is the list of area professionals and others. The Meridian Press will be notified, essentially of a public hearing, which will be November 21st for the public hearing and first reading. And then we'll move through November, December with the second, third reading with an effective date requested as January 1st, 2018. That really concludes what I have to present. But again, I'm willing to answer any questions and anything you might have.
It doesn't look like there's any at this point in the process.
All righty. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Brent. Okay, item 7D is under the Clerk's Office and Legal Department.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. I'm following Brent's exhilarating report with some more code update proposals that we have before you today. In your packet was a memo prepared by Emily Kane in the Legal Department, talking about some proposals we'd like to make to the temporary use code. In that memo are five highlights that address some of the issues and problems that we are trying to solve with this code update. A lot of it stems from our partners at ACHD. Over the years, currently, the city of Meridian has a citizen's use permit as part of our temporary use permit package. That is for any events that take place within the right-of-way. We take those applications in, and then we transmit those currently to ACHD. They have staff over there that reviews those, and they provide comments, they approve or deny, and then we either approve or deny that permit based on their comments. They have decided to institute at ACHD their own separate permit for events occurring within the right-of-way. That occurred, that was implemented on October 1st. Over the course of the summer months, we spoke with our friends there at ACHD, worked with them. They have their own timelines that they're working with on their permit, which were different from our timelines on our permit. So a lot of what we're trying to do special event-wise is remove our citizen's use permit because that is completely redundant with ACHD's special event permit. Try and line up our timelines closer to what their timelines are, so that if an applicant comes to us for an event that's happening within the right-of-way, and they haven't met ACHD's timeline, but they've met our timeline, we don't want there to be any confusion, that they can get our permit, but they can't get their permit, which would be a moot point. So we're trying to line up our timelines with, again, with ACHD, so that applicants aren't confused, or they're denied one and granted another one. We are, like I say, we're taking out the citizen's use permit. We are instituting or proposing to institute a large-scale temporary use permit, which would effectively replace the citizen's use permit, and that is for events occurring within arterial roadways, collector roadways, major roadways. For those events occurring on local streets, essentially block parties and that sort of thing, we are looking to not call them large-scale events, but rather just keep them regular, small-scale special events. Again, changing our timeline to meet ACHD's timeline. So right now, we currently have a 21-day process. We want to go to a 30-day process on the regular, if you will, special events. The large scale, we're looking to bump that up to 60 days, again, to get in line with ACHD's application and their timeline on their process. Some of the other cleanups that we are trying to make within the temporary use code are adding a provision for unauthorized vendors at special events in outdoor markets. If you recall, at the Dairy Days Parade, there were some issues about unauthorized vendors being within the parade route, creating some public safety issues there. So we're looking to address that within the code, saying that if you are an unauthorized vendor of that application, of that event, that is a prohibited act, if you're uninvited essentially by the event organizer, that you're unable to participate in that event. Again, trying to mitigate any public safety issues that we might have there. We are eliminating the permit requirements for temporary indoor events. We don't have any of those. It was, when that was created, it was created for a potential indoor venue that never materialized, and so we're looking to take that out because that is not a permit that we issue right now. So we want to take that out of the code. We are also looking to extend the timelines allowed for temporary sales units. Right now, we have 90 days. We're looking to bump that up to 120 days. The idea behind a temporary sales unit is seasonal, your snow cone shacks essentially. Right now, 90 days is not long enough. That doesn't cover an entire season for those seasonal activities, those seasonal vendors. So we want to look to increase that to 120 days. Along with that, though, we're providing a clarification within the code that if you are on property but you are closed, that that still counts as a day of use of your permit. This is similar to, if you look in any business across the city of Meridian, within the UDC, if you have a restaurant that's closed on a Sunday, the use on that property is still a restaurant. It doesn't cease being a restaurant just because it is closed. It's still a use on that property. So we are finding more and more that there are some temporary use or temporary sales units across the city that might be on the property year-round, but only open for 90 days. And so they are creating some use issues on the land where they technically should only be there for the 90 days. We're providing clarification within the code, bumping up the days to 120 days to hopefully allow for the true seasonal activity, which is the intent of this permit. And then we're also making some housekeeping and cosmetic updates, rearranging, making some number changes throughout the code, making it easier for applicants to find what they're looking for in the code, especially in the online version with our codifier being able to click on a specific section and having everything associated with that particular permit located right there instead of having to jump around a little bit. So I know that 31 pages seems lengthy for a temporary use code, but we're really trying to make it more manageable and easier to navigate for applicants and also for staff here to be able to find what they're looking for instead of having to jump from section to section. I will tell you that we have spent some considerable time with our temporary use team here at the city, which Nancy in our office heads up. She would have loved to have been here today. Unfortunately, some family circumstances prevents her from being here with us today. But she has worked tirelessly with just about every department within the city to talk about these updates, to get their input, to rework some of the updates. It's been a months-long process. Also, Emily Kane, she has worked tirelessly alongside with Nancy, doing that very same thing. We've also reached out to about 20 or so applicants that are frequent applicants with the city through all different types of permits that this covers to obtain their feedback or let them know at the very least that this is coming. Would you like to provide feedback? What is your insight? What is your input? We did hear back just from one of those applicants, that was the Dairy Board, saying that they appreciate the opportunity to provide feedback, and their feedback was that they really liked the section about unauthorized vendors because they did feel like that presented some issues along the parade route there. So in addition to that, if counsel is amenable to these changes, we're also looking to update the fee schedule associated with these permits to get them more in line with what they actually are. We would like to move ahead first with the code updates, or I should say, move those along, because the fee schedule would have to go through a public hearing process. As I said, ACHD, their fee or their permit went into effect October 1st, so we're trying to make sure that we're staying in line with them so that there isn't any confusion with applicants that may come to us first. We want to be good partners and make sure that we offer the ability and opportunity for applicants to have successful events and not be turned away because they didn't meet one deadline and then they met the other deadline at a different agency. So with that, I will stand for any questions.
Okay, counsel, questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, CJ, under number four, what happens when a snow cone shack owner comes to you and says, hey, my shack is in place, I'd like my permit, but it's been there since last season?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Palmer, so if I understand the question correctly, if a snow cone shack vendor comes to us and says, my snow cone shack is in place, it's been in place year-round, and I need, I'm just coming to re-up my permit, essentially.
Right.
Then we will permit him for the time allotted under the code, so if it moves forward, it's the 120 days, but inform them that at the end of those 120 days, that the snow cone shack needs to be removed. It should have been that way anyway, but informing them that that is what the law reads, that the snow cone shack needs to be removed. We do inform applicants of that anyway when they come in, but that's what we would inform them.
Madam Mayor, what's the enforcement, if they don't remove it? I didn't know these were supposed to be moved. I don't own one, but I see them around.
Code enforcement, code enforcement officers go in and speak with the individual, and if necessary, write citations.
Madam Mayor, I guess the reason I ask is, I don't know that it's, I don't know, maybe I'm alone, but I don't have a problem with them staying with these, I don't, maybe it is a problem with other, less, I don't know, more unsightly structures. It just seems like a bit much for government.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
Bill, stop me if I get off base here, but I believe the actual buildings of these snow cone shacks and stuff, and I'm like Councilman Palmer, I know two or three of them, that they're open from Memorial Day to Labor Day, but the building stays there, but they're on private property. They're not on the right-of-way or anything like that. They're on a piece of private property owned by that deal, so what we're actually temporary sales is just the business, isn't it? It isn't the facility.
Mr. Bird, members of the council, Madam Mayor, so you're right in the sense they are, but I think the use is tied to the building and is not, normally wouldn't be allowed there but for that temporary use. So that's where I think the nexus is, is why the building is not supposed to be there, because without that permit, it wouldn't be allowed to just construct a building out in the driveway or in the parking lot.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Laura Roberts.
Madam Mayor, CJ, so in this case, like, maybe, Bill, maybe this is better addressed to you. So the case of the snow cone shack that used to be by the pool, it was my understanding to eventually bring something like that back. It wouldn't be able to happen under the current code or the new code? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Little Roberts, it can come back the following year. It's, it can't just, it doesn't just go away, and then it comes back the next weekend under a different permit. It is a calendar year, but it can come back the following year and then the following year. But again, the 120 days, or currently the 90 days, proposing to the 120 days does allow for that, but it is a January 1 to December 31.
Madam Mayor, follow-up. The one that they had before the remodel of the pool was a permanent one and just opened and closed. And it was my understanding originally, talking to the people at the pool, they were hoping something like that would come back. And I know this past summer, we had a temporary one there, which was awesome since it was a yay kid. But, so will there not be opportunities to build a permanent structure to do things like that?
Mr. President, members of the council, Councilmember Little Roberts, I am unfamiliar with the specific snow cone shack at the pool. Certainly, I would imagine that there would be an opportunity to build a permanent structure. However, we do run into some UDC issues. So if that structure is tied to the use of the pool, and it's a retail use, that the planning staff in the UDC can figure out how to make that a part of that operation, then that's certainly something that can be explored. If it's a completely separate use, then yes, it would be, fall under the temporary use permit, but if it can find its way into a certificate of zoning compliance in connection with the pool, then a permanent structure could be built. What we're looking at here is literally temporary structures that, with a temporary use permit, we are able to bypass for the specified period of time certificate of zoning compliances in the UDC. Without a temporary use permit, then you fall under the UDC and need certificate of zoning compliances and all the other planning requirements that the city instills. So that's where the temporary use comes in, is we can say, no, you don't need, you're not required to do everything that a certificate of zoning compliance applicant would or that the UDC requires. We can, for 120 days, we can bypass some of those requirements. But if it's a permanent structure, then yeah, you're looking to go certificate of zoning compliance and UDC standards.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Emily, you got anything to enlighten us, or?
Thank you. I'll take that opportunity. Members of council, just to add something to this part of the discussion, the issue we're running into is, snow cone shacks are one thing, and there are kind of permanent concessionaires, and that's, as CJ mentioned, that's concessionaires, and that's, as CJ mentioned, that's typically, in that situation, part of the permanent use of that property. What we're running into is these typically, more typically temporary sales, like lawn ornaments or rugs or blankets or things that set up kind of a sales area and then stay there all year. Typically, they stop in the winter, but for months and months and months, or kind of just set up an outdoor store essentially. And they're, the way the code reads now, if they're closed for business, they can leave the store there. And so, it's essentially a, competing with bricks and mortar stores without the store. So, it looks like a garage sale, but it's there all year. So, that's the more typical problem that we're trying to address with this, to make it clear that if you're there, that is a day, but then kind of deal with the seasonal aspect by making it a longer period of time that you could be there. So, that is something that's been requested by snow cone shacks because they do want to be open from Memorial Day to Labor Day and not have to haul away their shack to accommodate that 90-day period.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, so I feel like by going this route, that we're saying, your permanent business is only welcome if you have a permanent structure. Or could somebody get 120-day permits over and over while not being open just to be able to leave their things in one place?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Palmer, should I go? The intention is that that would be 120 days in a calendar year, in a year. So, you're done after that 120 days, and you can come back next year. But the intention of the code is to accommodate temporary uses without also kind of taking away from our bricks and mortar businesses that have made those investments and, you know, having a building and a lease and just the accouterments of a business. So, there are some uses that are suited for a temporary outdoor use, like the snow cone shack or the lawn ornament sale. But the idea of the code or the intention of the code originally was to make it so that we have both.
Madam Mayor, by what mechanism is the hot dog place over on Main operating?
They are special. I would defer to Bill on that.
Madam Members of the council, so the Chicago Dog Stand that you're talking about next to that, that is an accessory use of the business that's there. So, the Rite Aid business actually is the applicant for that business to be there. So, it's treated differently as a temporary because it's actually essentially considered to be an accessory use of that existing business. It used to have the same when, I think it was Home Depot used to have a trailer place there too, and it was an accessory use of the business itself. So, we treat those differently than those because like CJ said, you talk about a lot of those snow cone shacks, those are not usually as problematic, but they are held to a different standard than building a permanent building on the site because now you're looking at the UDC requirements and whether or not they're allowed in that zone and those types of things, whereas here, we will allow them for those limited periods of time so that we can, you know, like Emily said, have businesses that kind of fit that model, but we don't want it to necessarily be sitting there the rest of the year as this old building or this old trailer that isn't being used and is just unsightly on the property.
Madam Mayor, then under that, would a snow cone shack be able to work out a deal with the business owner in which they have their place in their parking lot to go that route as opposed to a temporary use?
If it was, Madam Members of the council, I mean, it'd have to fit the same model. I mean, it'd have to be essentially an accessory use of that business. That's why the, for example, the Chicago Dog used to be out in the parking lot adjacent to the street, and we got exactly those complaints from existing businesses that didn't want this stand across the street from them when they had paid to upgrade their business there on Main Street. But that's why it moved back because then it basically became part of the footprint of that business that's there. So, if the Rite Aid goes away, that would be a problem, but as long as the Rite Aid's there and it's part of their business that they're requesting to do that, that's why it falls under our code. So, a snow cone shack could do that. If a business wanted to make that part of their business, they could certainly ask for it the same way.
Thanks.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
You know, this is touchy because a couple, three of these snow cone shacks I know that families have have helped get a few kids through college. It's the way they get through, and I don't see where they're really competing head-to-head with the brick and mortar. Yeah, you're competing against the Jacksons because they've got, I guess they've still got the flushies or whatever you're calling.
Flushies.
They've, I've outgrown some of that stuff finally, but anyway, I hate to, I hate to put such a burden on a business like this that is very popular and is very, I mean, I don't think we've ever had any problems around any of these snow shacks or anything. Boy, I've got to think a couple of minutes on this before I could go for this kind of a riding in the ordinance myself.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
While Mr. Byrd's pondering, I think whether it's snow cone shacks or hot tubs or rugs or lawn gnomes or whatever it may be, I have a hard time telling a property owner who's found a way to monetize their parking lot or their empty lot, tell them, you're only going to be able to monetize that for 120 days per year, even if it's across the street from a brick and mortar store, the same thing. I mean, we live in a free-market society for a reason, and it, I don't see it as a problem, maybe an inconvenience for competition, but that's a great thing. I love all of this, especially the extension, short of that limitation and that enforcement of, has to be moved afterwards.
Mr. Kavner.
Question for CJ or Emily or both. I appreciate what you're bringing to us. Could you just help maybe articulate to us what the large issue is that we're trying to solve by doing this? Is it that we want to limit the amount of these, I don't want to degrade the industry, but swap meat style businesses? I don't hear anything of you talking about snow cone stands, even though it sounds like if they leave their buildings there, they're a violation. But maybe walk me through, what's the problem that we're trying to solve with this?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Kavner, I think the largest issue, this particular part of the code that we're trying to solve is the, as Emily pointed out, the conflict we have with the UDC. So, the UDC governs land use within the city, and when you build any sort of store, a retail store, a restaurant, any sort of service or good that you're providing to the city, you have to go through the planning department and you have to fall under whatever the UDC prescribes for your particular use you're putting on that property. With temporary use applications, we're able to bypass the requirements of the UDC for whatever, again, the good or services, rugs, lawn ornaments, hot tubs, snow cones, whatever the service is or good that's being provided, we're able to say the UDC for this amount of time or up to this amount of time doesn't apply in essence. You don't need to conform to, or you don't need to come up to the standards that the city has prescribed. So, if, at this point, the clarification within the code isn't provided to say that your stand can stay there for year-round. You don't have to put any of the landscaping. You don't have to put in the parking. You don't have to do anything that the UDC prescribes for that particular location. So, some of the feedback that we have received is, I have to go through and do these things and come up to the standard that is the city of Meridian if I'm a brick and mortar, but if I'm not a brick and mortar, I can just get a PUP and hey, I'm there year-round. So, that's, we're trying to solve some of the conflict that we see between the UDC and the temporary use permit and make them talk to each other a little bit better.
Madam Mayor.
Just an additional question then, where do food trucks fall into this conversation?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Kavner, so food trucks, we don't have a provision specifically for food trucks. They are mobile sales units specifically. That's where we would put them within. Also, would they fall promotional sales? I'm not sure, Emily, if they.
They could also be a temporary sales unit if they park for more than two hours. So, they would be subject to either or, or both. Many of those vendors do get both so that they can both rove around and stop wherever they can over the lunch hour, but then also park for a longer amount of time.
So, to continue on that, we don't have a specific provision that is food truck-specific such as other communities, some of them do. We don't. I know of one food truck within the city that was put in place prior to that going into effect, and they're kind of grandfathered into their location, where they're located. If they were to cease that use and to leave that location, they wouldn't be able to, and actually, we spoke of one, by the way, I know of an additional one. And if they, again, if they cease that use, moved on, they wouldn't be able to re-establish according to the current code.
Not sure if we have any clear direction.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we are looking to, like I say, come back with these draft changes being codified. I did briefly mention also the fee structure that we're looking to adopt, which is included in your memo. None of those fees are higher than what we currently charge. We had to do a reanalysis based on including large scale and taking out the citizen's use permit and do a reanalysis to make sure that our fees made sense, where they were located based on staff time and the departments that review each application that comes in and what they're looking for and how long they take. So, again, if we came back with those fees as currently presented, that would, we're hoping would be two weeks, three weeks from now, but the code updates, we would like to make sooner than that, again, to get us in line, mainly to get our timelines in line with ACHD on permit application submittals.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
CJ, one more question. On these, and I'm particularly talking about the snow cone shacks, they've got electric in it, and they got, I think, water going. Are they inspected? I mean, we certainly inspect them for safety and stuff like that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Byrd, I know that the building division does look at those permits, whether or not they go out and inspect based as a condition of approval on those permits. I can't say yes or no either way, but I know that they are included in the application review process. If they feel an inspection is necessary on that particular one, they might include that, but they are included in the review of that application.
Follow-up, Mayor. Mark, does Kenny or Joe or anybody look at them once in a while?
Councilman Byrd, I think to answer your question.
Thanks, Steve. To answer your question, I think it depends on the use. So, certainly if there's cooking equipment in those, we would absolutely go out and inspect. If it's more of a shed-type environment, we typically don't inspect those. I could certainly follow up with Joe to get that answer, but my history tells us we don't typically go out and inspect those.
If it's got electrical or something in there, you could, and to run the machines, they certainly have that in there. Probably a panel box. I know you got to go forward with this, but I don't know. I've got, I got to see what it comes back in the forms. I just don't want to hurt those. I mean, I, like I said, I know too many families that have helped get their kids through college because of those snow shacks.
But this is helping them. It's not restricting them. This is allowing, well, they already do.
They don't do it, but sorry.
They already do. They just, it's just apparently not all enforced. Till someone calls and says so-and-so hasn't moved it, co-enforcement doesn't go out and look for those things.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Any chance of, I don't know the complexities of doing this, of splitting it as two different conversations? One, is the 120 days and all the other provisions except for the enforcement requirement that they be moved annually and then have that conversation, decide whether we want to force that or require it or put it in there?
Well, and what that, leaving it permanently known by permit, what that does in changing it in zoning, parking requirements, landscaping requirements, if it triggers square footage type of issues per the building code and those kind of things. Because those, that is why it's required to move, is because otherwise those things are triggered. Mr. Kavner.
Madam Mayor, I'd actually question for Mr. Sidaway since he's in the audience. I know that we have a couple of snow shacks that are tenants in our parks. I assume we require them to remove their facility at the end of the season? We're in compliance?
Yes, we do. If we get into too many specifics, I may have to get Colin Moss down here who manages those contracts, but we have multiple snow cone contracts with like Tully Park, I think Bear Creek, we've had one in Centennial. We've been looking for someone to come into Story Park to replace the one that used to be on the ward with the swimming pool. They do remove those facilities and come back in the spring.
Thanks, Steve.
Staff, oh, Mr. Burton.
Madam Mayor. If any direction, at least in my mind, I think what you guys have done is fantastic. The subject isn't whether or not we should allow temporary uses as I see it in the city. I mean, that ship has sailed, and we've got a structure that we've been doing for years that allows for it. And what you're doing here without increasing fees, you're trying to expand the opportunity for the season to be served by the business, all of that makes sense, and it doesn't add a new obligation to remove property. Probably tries to make it a little more clear what their obligations are, and it has some enforcement mechanism for the city to have people comply and do with their property as they're agreeing to do in exchange for receipt of the permit in the first place. So, it seems to make sense going forward, or to bring it forward. I'm supportive of it. Dialogue of whether or not we should regulate gnome sellers or rug sellers in parking lots, that's a totally different conversation. That's a, should we have a concept such as a temporary use in the first place, which isn't really what we're doing here. So, I see the, we've described with the UDC and the existing objective, consistent rules of the road, for better or for worse, and operating the business in Meridian, we all play by these rules. And the city at some point said, "Well, let's try and help out and provide to our citizens these additional opportunities to have goods and services that might be seasonal for a rug or a snow cone or something that wouldn't otherwise be able to invest in the city to provide what would be a year-round expense for seasonal activity." So, this is a solution to a problem to provide, and that's what these temporary users are trying to do, is to provide an additional opportunity for to provide an additional opportunity for goods and services that wouldn't otherwise be available to be provided, even if it's a snow cone or a gnome. Can't have a gnome or a snow cone business perhaps twelve months a year. That's the whole genesis of these temporary use permits, and it's been that way for a while. So, this improves that existing permissive opportunity for vendors. So, I think it should come forward. I think you guys have done a great job and in great outreach, too, in trying to get input from others in the pros and cons. The discussion of, do we regulate people in parking lots? Interesting for sure, but I think that's a different one. I think you can go forward with these changes, these improvements to the existing process, still have that discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, just bring it back.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item 70 is under Fire Department with update on two JPAs, or one JPA and...
One JPA.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, members of council, good evening. I am here to update you on what is known as the Treasure Valley Fire Service Joint Powers Agreement. As you recall, months back, we signed on to that agreement, and then we had a hiccup in the process where NAPA did not. And so, through conversations with all of you, you asked us to go back to the drawing board and look at more of a memorandum of understanding. I think Councilman Bird suggested that, that is less binding, less intrusive, less language of authority, all that kind of good stuff. Emily Kane has been kind enough to draft that up. That's in the hands of the fire chiefs currently being reviewed. I anticipate that review to be about 30 to 45 days. Just going back to what happened then versus where we're at now, and I think Councilman Burton, you asked this question when we did this originally, is what about Kuna and Eagle? Those are two specifics that you brought up. So, things have changed in this valley since the time that we talked about the joint powers agreement. One is, as you know, Kuna has a new fire chief. He spent one meeting with his commissioners and said, here is what's going on. We'd like to participate, and they said, absolutely. And then in Eagle, they have a new fire chief. His name's Rusty Kofeld. He came from the Anaheim area. He is very much interested in what we're trying to do, simply to cooperate and work together. That was kind of the norm in the Anaheim area, and it's the norm in California. So, he is very much interested and engaged in what we're trying to do. Really, the question boils down to, why do we need an agreement in the first place? If we're talking about fire chiefs getting together to cooperate, do training together, figure out operational plans together, we don't necessarily need that agreement. We do need an agreement, and it can be done in the form of an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, if we want to do such things as any kind of joint bulk purchasing, such as fire hose. If four agencies have fire hose that need to be bought in the same year, and we want to, at a minimum, maintain cost or contain it, and at best find savings in cost by doing bulk purchasing, we need to have some agreement in place, so that when I hand that off to finance, they say, where's your agreement? I can show them their agreement. The auditors really like when there's an agreement in place like that. The other big area that it is very important to have an agreement is when it comes to mutual aid and automatic aid. We have in Idaho what's called the ISRB, otherwise known as ISO in other states. ISO comes in and does an evaluation of our water department, our water system, and of our fire department. They give an overall rating or score to our fire department, and that in turn then goes out to the insurance companies, who use that to figure out insurance rate for either homeowners or commercial business. So, those are the two areas, as far as an agreement goes, where it is important. Again, if it were simply, let's get together and train, we wouldn't need an agreement to do that. So, that's where we're at as far as the memorandum of understanding. I've looked extensively through the document that Emily created. I think it meets our intent. It meets your intent as far as the language contained within that. As far as the current joint powers agreement, I think you have two options. You can ask the mayor to send a letter that's in the agreement today, 30 days' notice, to rescind that, or you can leave it in place. So, there's no financial obligation to it right now. There's no other obligation you have. So, really, it's a choice on council on what you would like to do with that current joint powers agreement. I have no preference either way. We can rescind it, knowing we'll work on it together, and we'll bring it back to you as a MOU for your consideration. Just real quick, before we get to the end here, I wanted to update you on a couple of things we are doing together that I think are worth mentioning and very important. One is the Joint Recruit Academy that's going on. We're eight weeks into that. We have five agencies participating in that and sharing in the cost of that Joint Recruit Academy, NAPA, Caldwell, Eagle, Kuna, and us. All of the staff that we hired to go into that academy are still in that academy. So, eight weeks in, and we still have all eight in, which is a good thing for us, is that, in the fire department. And then we also have a 14-week officer development program going on. This is mandatory for any future company officer or captain in our organization as they go to promote. It's 14 weeks of education, not only in command and control, but in other firehouse issues like human resources, conflict management, and some of those issues that we know our supervisors are gonna face. We have eight agencies participating in that, including Boise. And then we also just are in the final stages of the RFQ process for station architects. We had seven agencies involved in that RFQ process. It'd be the seven that we discussed earlier, as far as NAPA, Caldwell, Eagle, Kuna, Star, and Middleton. We are in the final stages of that, working with Keith Watts to select the up to three qualified architects for future fire station design. So, some success stories there as far as working with others. And with that, I will take any questions on the JPA or anything else.
Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Chief, when we see the MOU come back, who will be the, what entities will be signing it?
We will be last. I can tell you that. But the agencies at the chief level that have committed, and they've been in communication with their boards and their councils, NAPA, Caldwell, Eagle, Kuna, Star, Middleton, and us. So, seven agencies. We will be last.
Other questions? Mr. Cavanagh?
Chief, do you anticipate any substantive changes being made to the current version that the chiefs are reviewing?
I don't anticipate that. I think it's really well-written. It got rid of all the board language, authoritative language, voting language, basically a financial clause that allows us to work together on joint purchasing, but it does not bind boards or councils to any, anything.
Madam Mayor, follow-up. Chief, can we get a copy of that?
Absolutely.
Just send it to us, I guess, seeing it sooner rather than later. Sometimes those documents are meaty and often require more than three or four days to be able to dive into it.
I can tell you it's a lot less pages than it was before.
Always also good.
Chief, I just, I had hoped that you would also give any kind of an update. We signed the EMS JPA a couple of weeks ago, and would like any kind of an update you can provide on that.
Yeah, I think really the message, and I know Chief Lavey's here, and we had an interesting conversation this morning. The message that I continue to send on the EMS Joint Powers Agreement, for those of you that were here eight, nine, 10 years ago, when EMS was controversial and agencies were tied up in lawsuits and all of that good stuff, because we weren't working together, the biggest thing that it has done is brought us together. It forces us together on a monthly basis. We work together. We have standardized protocols. We have standardized our medical direction, which we had not, we had inconsistent medical direction. But through that, also the relationships that have been built and how we are moving forward now in problem-solving and solution-oriented approaches. And I bring that up because we had the other day a fairly complex call that involved law enforcement, fire, police, and we had a little hiccup in that. And it was as simple as one person making a phone call to the other, meeting face-to-face, and we got it resolved. That would not have happened 10 years ago. So, those are the positives moving forward. The other big pluses, you may have seen the commercial came out on PulsePoint. PulsePoint is an app that has been pushed out by our EMS system and is being promoted by our EMS system. So, if you saw the commercial, you had all of the fire chiefs and the EMS chief standing side-by-side, shoulder to shoulder, talking about saving people's lives through community CPR. So, there's those things that are continuing to evolve today, how we distribute. There's a CPR, I always called him a thumper, but that's my gray hair coming out, because that's what we called him 20 years ago. But in our EMS system, we have now distributed those out across the county, so that we have those things, those items, available on a cardiac arrest more readily and easily. That's the level of cooperation that continues to occur today. So, anything else I can answer on that, I'd be happy to.
Looks like nothing further. Very good. Thank you. Okay, item 7F is the citywide strategic plan update. I'll move to the podium. Already did. So, what do I push? Okay. Thank you. Okay, so I am back with a biannual update on the strategic plan. And so, tonight, this afternoon, whatever it is, I'm gonna go over these six different areas. We have a dashboard to share with you, close that report on those items that had been completed at 100%. Discuss the high-priority objectives and some of the activities that are currently underway in those. And then, I did want to bring back the objective discussions that you had in June, and to give a brief overview of that, and have a specific objective that we would like to pose to you, get some feedback, and then go to next steps. So, these are an overview dashboard, just a snapshot of where we're at with our 64 total objectives. The pie chart gives you that update and where things are in the process of this five-year strategic plan and the objectives that are related to that. On the gauges on the side, the first one shows you six out of the 64 objectives have been completed, and the bottom one, the 22% tactic completion. And we're going to be adding this to the quarterly dashboards that you get, so you have that on a quarterly basis. So, these are the different objectives that were 100% complete when we discussed it in June, and I'll go through each of these briefly and highlight a couple of the different areas. So, in 1.8.2, this area was agreed upon and is currently an urban, the first economic urban renewal district in the state, specifically for ED. And while that is 100% complete, I do think it's important that biannually we bring back an update as to what's going on in those urban renewal district areas. It was anticipated that the MDC would be here and give an annual update, but I think that this is an integral part of our strategic plan, and certainly set in place by the city council. So, we want to make sure that you have those updates in a timely fashion. So, the area was confirmed to be somewhat of that economic development headquartered area. Already, two headquarters are locating out there. Amerbin is 75,000 square feet. It's an investment of $7.2 million. And they have their 605 employees out there. By the end of the year, they'll be growing to 700 and growing over 100 employees for the next several years, each year. Brighton is bringing a 63,000-square-foot, four-story building, and part of that will be palosity, which is expected to grow to 500 jobs over time. So, this performance measurement has been completed, but again, we want to bring this back for biannual updates.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Are you cheering?
Mr. Palmer.
It's a five-story building.
A five-story building?
For palosity.
Okay. Is that true on the building permit? Okay, I guess I better update that. I didn't count the floors. That was last I heard as part of the report. So, Objective 2.8.2, this was as related to economic development, and I'm just gonna do the whole thing instead of having people get up and get down. And if you have any questions, certainly we can have one of our directors give you more meat to the discussion. But this completed objective is also, in my opinion, needs to be ongoing in bringing back information to you as we continue to develop better tools and business attraction. So, one of those activities they completed was a steering committee. And one of our council members was intricately involved in this, Ms. Lil Roberts, in developing the steering committee. It had a number of chamber representatives from the private sector, as well as public sector, with the city, CWI, and MDC, as well as other community partners. And this was basically utilized for two different things. And probably the most time-consuming was the downtown multi-use center and the RFI that went out as it related to that. It was also used in the Project Clipper site visit, in developing an approach to how we could best attract Project Clipper. And that was a great exercise in bringing the various partners together and what we could do collectively and in collaboration to attract an employer to the area. The second area was instituted monthly meetings. Brenda meets monthly with brokers. This is to strengthen the relationships and what is available in our community. And as she visits with these brokers, that partnership and that greater awareness of what is available and how she can get participation by these brokers when we do have a company looking. It gives more rapid response, and it allows for equal partners to the table. The third area is really utilizing our businesses that are here today through site visits, that better understand contacts that these larger employers have in the community and outside the community, of who might be looking to relocate. That meets our clusters, like the Health Science and Technology Corridor, or in our core competencies in professional services and headquarters. And so, those relationships are nurtured by both my office and economic development, and so, in that realm, it's an ongoing effort. In Objective 3E1, these were headed up by our legal team. And while the code was updated in 2013, while we were doing a cleanup to add the additional council seats, we also took out some pretty antiquated language that was associated with it. But this is, in some regard, ongoing. We did, it's really focused on onboarding, whether it's onboarding for city council, for our commissions, and the next focus is really on onboarding for our directors, as we get new directors in, having that orientation. I do know that Bill will be reaching out to you to get feedback on what was helpful as you came on board in your training and what we can incorporate into that as we look for a new city council member. In Objective 5A3, this was updated to our, by Todd in August. He brought a report to you on different types and tools for financing facilities. He brought a report to you on different types and tools for financing facilities. And he outlined the information. We figured that that closed out that objective. Objective 5B2, you've heard about this objective in several different conversations. We certainly rolled it out in 2015 with a one-day event. And now, I've had two successful seasons. We feel that the performance goal has been met, but this is an ongoing event that we will bring back annual updates to how it went. We just had a debrief meeting just last week. And just a couple of highlights to bring to you as they're looking at renaming it, that it would just be the Meridian Farmers Market. It will still have an emphasis on use in terms of the canopies and the tables will be dedicated to those kids. It will be set up for them. And we will have that focus on use. But one thing that our organizer did here is those adult vendors give the consistency of products that our repeat customers come back for. And that's almost a necessity. We're also looking at meeting with some of the downtown... we've met with the Downtown Business Association and some of the businesses in downtown that have an interest in maybe relocating it and so that it's more visible. And they can build additional energy on it as it gets closer to some core businesses. So, we'll bring back more information as that gets further fleshed out. So, Objective 5C1, also 100% complete. This came out of the Clerk's Office, where they maintain a list of events, donors, and future funding partners. Additional, they have done research in identifying different funding mechanisms that can help support the arts, their programs, and their events. And that's maintained in the Clerk's Office with Hillary. So, the third area is to focus on some of those high priority objectives that were listed. There's 14 of the 64. There are no specific variances that are unexpected. And...but I will highlight some of the activities or, in some cases, what some of the next steps are underway. So, in 1.8.1, this has been pretty active in working with the MDC and continuing to create a sense of energy and activities in our downtown. You are all familiar with the placemaking activities along Idaho Avenue. That is a completed objective. They have been working with the Downtown Business Association on roadway priorities and getting additional feedback on that. And that is an ongoing and not completed tactic. The city survey asked some questions about our downtown that we're utilizing that information in first, working with listening tours and getting additional feedback from our citizens to maybe vet out some additional information on what the answers really meant. And next, we did some...three different meetings with the downtown business owners in the core, from Fairview to Franklin, to really bring them together to find out what their hopes and vision is for the area and to discuss our findings in our city survey. And some of the conversation was really interesting. And the Downtown Business Association has taken that and has created a food and beverage committee for the downtown to better communicate their events and activities and how they can cross-advertise what's going on. April in my office has been working every week with Holly at the Meridian Press and getting in weekly activities that the businesses contact her with. She's kind of that center point and she moves them on to Holly. The Meridian Press has been very helpful in focusing on highlighting what's going on in our downtown and helping us get the word out. So, the last thing is really to work on policies that encourage redevelopment that fits with the vision. So, our planning department does work with applicants as they come into City Hall and discuss the downtown...destination downtown vision and work with them on...and making sure they understand what the vision was and if there was a role that they can play in achieving it.
Mr. President?
Mr. Camder.
Madam Mayor, before you move on, can you touch on a little bit more about tactic number three?
Okay, the tactics, I'm not going into the tactics. I'm just giving you an overview on what the activity is in. What we envision is the tactics are fluid and ever-changing. And at this point, I want to show and highlight any obstacles that we're finding, what activities are going on to move that objective forward. And we'll save the tactic discussions and any changes to objectives for the annual review.
Would you just be able to share any efforts to have events and organizations hold activities in downtown?
I'm sorry, what?
I just was curious then if you could provide us an update about organizations or individuals that are planning to hold events in downtown or in Generations Plaza?
I...I'm just giving you some bullets, not an exhaustive list of what's going on. And I can't...yeah, I can't answer anything specific other than what I've shared. I can say in the events and activities, like I covered in the Meridian Farmers Market, they do want to move it closer into the core to where businesses are rather than in City Hall that seems a little bit more isolated and maybe some barriers to being closer to where those businesses are and where they can create some energy. And they are moving the trunk-or-treat activity or event into the downtown. We were really constrained with some of the space. We're expanding down Idaho and Main Street, or not Main Street, but Second Street. And I think our...we'll have four different entries into it. We'll have a stage, they have food trucks. And so, they're really trying to build on that event to make it bigger, better, and better engage our downtown businesses.
I think that's a great example.
And so, maybe that's the event I can highlight.
Perfect.
Okay. So, 1B1 is something that you'll be hearing more about. You did get an update from Community Development. This is really tied to the comprehensive plan update. I do think that noteworthy is the efforts that you just heard from our Public Works Department and what we're doing in capacity expansion to respond to growth pressures in both the wastewater treatment plant and in well development as well. And probably key to the growth goal piece to this is the master planning that's going on in both of those areas. Also, in response to those growth goals and the growth priority for South Meridian, moving forward and performing on the infrastructure commitments that were made. And that we are a little bit behind schedule because of obstacles that were unforeseen and working with easements and agreements with those that we needed to run our facilities through. But again, that completion date is November of 2019. We think with the comprehensive planning efforts and those kind of things, definitely, we will meet that completion goal. Objective 1. C.1 is looking at our established area of impact boundaries. We have real firm boundaries, both east and west, and for the most part, in the north. We have had a couple of businesses talking to us. And before we would go any further, that would be a discussion with the City of Eagle. But we do need to amend our area of impact. When we were unsuccessful in our legislation regarding state code changes that are needed, we got our teams together in Public Works, Community Development, and my office to work with the citizens in South Meridian, which is...which resulted in that large annexation route to protect our ability to provide infrastructure down in that area. We have been meeting with the City of Kuna and had discussions with that same team with their equals in Kuna. And once we have something, and maybe it will have to come to council for further discussion, but we hope to firm those up. We do need to get an updated plan to the county. And so, that is an ongoing effort. The completion date for that is targeted for September of 2018. Objective 2.8.1, this is identifying tools, and I think you have seen some of that. We appreciate your support of the Community Matching Fund for tax reimbursement incentive projects. That...like that was utilized for the Idaho College of Osteopathic Medicine. We've established the Special Economic Development Urban Renewal District. That is a great tool in the toolkit. And Brenda has been implementing and working with the op-sites for access to Meridian's properties that we can work with investors and developers on. She is in the midst of developing and completing her inventory of different incentive programs in other areas that attract certain industries. And that will be coming back to council. The completion date is still on target for December of 2018. Objective 2.8.3, and promote job growth and in industry clusters. Certainly, that her work with the utilization of op-sites, Gem State Prospector, and the database that she's been collecting has been helpful as she gets referrals. She has, through a grant and partnership again with Ann, developed some great contacts in the health, science, and med tech areas. And important lessons were really learned through those exercises. But that's a growing database that she hopes to better employ as we open up our College of Medicine and we get a new Community Development Director in to formalize some of those important relationships. And she also has been reaching out to medical technology companies to tap into their resources of companies and contacts that they know. She is in the midst of completing her video and marketing material, and I think she highlighted that last month in her report to council. Objective 3.2.8, improve citizen access to government. We will be going over there here shortly, so I'm gonna skip this one. 3B1 is the plan that we found in our benefits is competitive. It's a continuous improvement that they're looking at to be competitive and look at the increasing challenge in the cost of medical and insurance. That is a large portion of our benefits. HR is exploring options so that the benefits meet the workers' needs because we do understand a one-size does not fit all when you have single, single with kids, single or married, married with families, and also different age generations, beginning of career to ending of career. So, they constantly are monitoring that and looking at what are best practices and best ways to pay. The requirements for self-funding versus being fully insured by an outside company is looking for what that experience rating is against the tipping point for needing that change. And so, this is a stay...stay tuned, they're working on it. Objective 3B3 is also underway. We appreciate the funding that we've received for fiscal year 2018, and that represents the 15% that's completed. HR is focused on key positions that are hard to recruit for, that are those professional levels that if we don't remain competitive, we risk losing great employees. And so, they're identifying tools and skills needed, and then they'll work to create the necessary plans. They expect to start in the second quarter and complete this third quarter of fiscal year 2018. And the completion date in our plan has been for October of 18. So, 3B4 is also just underway. And that doesn't mean that a lot of efforts have not been going into this. Our city retention rate is 98.5%. And...but she has been beginning with researching key components of a formalized plan for the City of Meridian. And one component is the city...is the Employee Engagement Survey. And that has been funded. It's...she, right now, is working with the company that will be doing that next...early next year. And that will launch and be done early in third quarter. So, looking at what our baseline for city culture is so that you can start seeing what the movement is and putting a plan in place. Objective 3B5 is regarding the compensation plan. And again, this percentage complete, while her completion date is September of 2018, doesn't really show a lot of the efforts that have been going on in this area. I mentioned the employee retention rates. It has moved from the low 90s to the high 90s. But that doesn't mean that this does not need specific look. We've already completed specific employee groups in Public Works, the Police Step Plan. And we had some activity and analysis in parks. We completed a market review to ensure that the City of Meridian is competitive to the market in these high-risk employee areas. We completed one-third of the internal alignment, which is 67 job descriptions reviewed to ensure that it aligns with the market. And been researching survey compensation tools that can be used for resources. So, next steps include review those top performers and retention rates and compare it to overall city retention rates, compare neighboring municipality programs and industry trends. And we are just undergoing a comprehensive wage and benefit survey for our fire department. And we'll be working on the update of the Police Step Plan, both of those in this next fiscal year. Objective 3C1, this is a boring one, if the other ones haven't been boring enough. Sorry, Chief, I had to throw that one in, just to see if they were looking. We did analyze what it would take to develop our own local incident management... We did analyze what it would take to develop our own local incident management team certified. It would require five ICS classes, Incident Command System classes, and specific position training that is offered by FEMA. We have reached out and researched forming a valley-wide team, which makes more sense, and that would be in coordination with ACEM. And so short of that, we do have, because we do have three city members on the Idaho Incident Management and Support Team, in a crisis situation, we do have their resources for the first 48 hours, and that will be a huge benefit to our city. And our own standalone incident management team is, again, being looked at as to what the cost and what the time requirements would be if we had ours versus a valley-wide. So that's ongoing. I do want to reiterate what you've probably heard several times, and that's, we deployed an IMT during Snowmageddon, and the positives we learned in that was city staff integrated well for the common good. Communication to the public was the best in the valley, and we've heard this time and time again by other agencies and our own citizens. Our lessons learned is our city staff integrated well. Even some of those departments that traditionally don't train or talk on a regular basis, the integration of these teams was almost seamless. And I give a lot of credit to our incident management team, J.C., Mark, and Scott Coliani. So it really was nicely put together, and with the communication plan by Casey Amory. It was awesome. So next steps, we are holding next month a city planning team meeting for Meridian, in particular, in anticipation of another snow event, in case there is one. And the next step to that is hoping to motivate that county-wide conversation of what should the roles and responsibilities look like, and who would be responsible for what, and we hope that that meeting is called by ACEM. So they've been invited to our meeting to hopefully spur the next step conversation by them. Objective 3D1, this is really our appreciation to you with the Strategic Performance Analyst. Recruitment is underway, there has been phone interviews with applicants, and I'm not sure if we'll have someone onboard before J.C. leaves, but we do know that this position will be working with the departments to really bring a lot more consistency and cohesiveness and working with them on their specific objections, objectives, and objections probably, and fleshing out what are the existing resources and what are future needs that they would need to bring back in conversation to City Council. And that completion date is December of 2020. AE4, and this is what really drove our strategic plan in getting a priority-based budgeting approach, and what it looked like. You've heard from various reports from both J.C. and Todd on the research that was done over in Washington State on priorities in government and priority-based budgeting approaches. You had a conversation with the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting, and after that, we did follow-up by interviewing different cities that use priority-based budgeting to learn from them, was it a useful tool, and would they do it again, were they continuing to use it? And all that information will be kind of loaded onto the position in finance that they are adding on with the fiscal analyst, and he will lead this, he or she will lead this objective. And they do hope to bring a pilot project in three departments, in finance, the clerk, and IT, and they'll be bringing that recommendation back to council, and what they're proposing, what it would look like, and how they would recommend piloting it. And this objective's completion date is September of 2020. 4A4 is all about safe community, and this is really about the whole objective of 4A. So in this particular one, this is listed as high priority, but the two objectives that lead up to this are low and medium priorities. So we're working to kind of realign these so they make better sense in order, but they are looking at identifying the gaps in service and proposing needed improvements for threats and hazards. But there are very, a lot of activities going on in furthering safety in Meridian. As you see, when we get recognition from these national outlets, a lot of this is based on safe community. And so now I can see what staff gets to deal with, is, I can read body language, too. Do you guys want this update report? We're trying to make it informational and interesting.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Byrd, is that a yes?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If you could maybe just slow down a little bit, I think that I'm trying to keep up with everything that you're touching base on while also taking a look at the plan.
Well, thank you, Mr. Cavanagh. I've never been asked to slow down. That is awesome. I sure will. On 4A, we really are focused on that, all of the objectives under this one area, but I do want to highlight some of the activities that are going on in furthering safety in Meridian. So Public Safety in our neighborhoods, they're looking at safe routes to school, where neighborhoods surround a public school, and the sidewalk connectivity, and in that Snowmageddon area is identifying priority areas to keep snow removal as a first priority. That other area in neighborhoods is additional lighting, and you heard a little bit about that from Public Works, as that continues to be a focus, and one of the reasons that Garrett had received recognition for his efforts. The Police, Fire, and Planning Department continue to huddle on evaluating each of our developments to the crime prevention through environmental design and our planning reviews. That is essential, and probably even more so as we get these higher-density development applications. Our Transportation Commission continues to examine individual citizen issues as they bring up safety concerns about traffic-related issues in their neighborhoods. And Parks continues to focus on that connectivity with pathways and planning and evaluating the sidewalk connectivity as we continue to grow and develop. So we anticipate additional updates after some of these activities happen with the safety profile and identifying the threats and hazards, and then evaluating our tactics for priority actions and projects. And you'll see that at the annual update, and what any of those recommended changes are going to be in those objectives as they stand today. So the fourth area is really trying to give a brief touchpoint on those sayings that were discussed at the June 27 meeting that aren't necessarily related to the high priority areas, and then I'll have Robert discuss the improving citizen access to government objective to walk you through that. So the strategic goal of 4B, again, that's one grouped together with several different objectives in that, and that's establishing Meridian as a premier health community. We thought we would have the update from Kendra with Blue Cross Foundation on how a city interacts with that health profile, and unfortunately, she had some things come up, so you'll have that on your agenda in two weeks. After that presentation, we'd like to use the discussion that council has to further that what those objectives will look. So this is another one of those areas that on the annual update, you'll probably see some recommended changes that we'll have a discussion with you and be seeking your feedback on. And 5A2, this initially was brought to you last June as to merge two objectives into one, and council gave us feedback, they would like to see it remain as two separate ones. So I know that we were really focused on, or Parks was really focused on, this being part of the South Meridian Regional Park, and we wanted it broader than that, because that's something that needs to be focused on in looking at public sports facilities, complexes, and how we can create partnerships to make these happen, as we have in the past with Meridian Youth Baseball, or the PAL soccer fields, and those kind of things. Being aware of the concept and development plans for South Meridian, it does have a sports complex with the software or softball aspect, and that continues to be a high priority area for our programs. But we have integrated theming into park design, and looking at activities such as the acquisition of Home Court and the facility that that brings in line for this particular objective, and really the next step is that public softball field in our South Meridian Park. And Objective 5A4, it's really adding and fostering personalities and identities in our parks, and combining the blending of arts, entertainment, and culture. And you see that not just in the South Meridian Park, but you start seeing that theming in the Hillsdale Park, and the Rita Husky Park with the floral designs, really capturing the essence of Rita Husky, and the Keith Bird Legacy Park with the wildlife and the multi-generational uses, and in Heroes Park with our Heroes Trail. So those activities are all underway. Objective 3A2, and improve access to government. I am going to turn this over to Robert, and he'll walk you through just the process to get some feedback from you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. So I'm going to do my best to not, I've gotten really passionate about this topic, and so hopefully I don't get preachy on this topic from this standpoint, and we can have a, get my thoughts, but, okay, that's great. I know that the mayor was able to at least give a primer to some of you over the last month or so on this topic, if she had time and the time she sat down with you, but this objective is one that kind of came up, and we, I know that there's an interest from council, a lot of people, they really, you know, we raised this up, it's really about, you know, how do we improve citizen access to government? And I really want to focus on the objective summary here, because I think that to me, you know, the objective summary tells you what you're really, hopefully, trying to accomplish. I'm going to walk you through to where I got to, and then have a conversation about some of the things that we could do to implement this and get your feedback on those concepts. So if you look at the objective summary, it's create greater engagement and participation, and I want to highlight facilitate citizen input in planning, operations, and decision-making process of the city. If you notice, this doesn't say tell residents what you're going to do more. You know, that's not what this is about, that this is if you, if we're really focusing on what the objective for this one is, you're saying you want the citizens' input in the decisions that we're making as a city, you know, from that standpoint. So with that, this is something that I was able to do, what we like to do in city government sometimes, I was able to kind of steal this from another community. This one just happened to be in the Southern Hemisphere in Australia, so I think that we're good on any copyright infringement from that standpoint. But this really, to me, is where I got transformed when I was working on this specific strategic objective. When you look at the different ways in which government interacts with the community, and what you don't see down here is the pre-work that was done, kind of identifying all the different ways that we interact with the community under these areas. The reality is, as a city, we spend a lot of time on the left-hand side. We do a lot of informing of our community. We do a little less consulting, but we still do a fair amount. The further you move to the right, the less we do as a city. And I don't think that that's indicative of, I think that's just in general, you know, I'm not saying that's just Meridian, I think that's government, generally, that's the way a lot of things operate, is we tell people a lot about what we're going to do. On occasion, we ask them, and I think the best way is, you know, when you talk really about public hearings from that standpoint, are involved, are collaboration, and are empowered, given the citizens the, if you really want to talk about the way to involve citizens, you give them the decision-making power. Now, whether or not that, you say that only 1,000 people will give you your feedback, or 50 will give you your feedback, well, you know, turning that over to your citizens is a way that you can truly involve them. And just to editorialize even more on this topic, I think as cities, we often complain about the state legislature not giving us the empowerment ourselves to make decisions, that whether it's local option tack, or whether it's plastic bags in grocery stores, or whatever the case may be. You know, as cities, we don't like it when people don't give us the ability to make decisions, so part of this comes back to, as a body, do we feel that that is something that we feel confident in giving our citizens the ability to make some of the decisions that we may or may not want to make, or think that they should or shouldn't. So with that, I just want to talk, I'm going to work my way through those five levels with some actions that we could take, in theory, to improve our citizen access to government. And like I say, I'm looking for feedback on each of these to say, is this something that you think is worth looking into or not from that standpoint? And then we can go from there. And I'm, so this is the very easy part on the left-hand side, informing people. We do a good job about this, I think, as a city, and when you look at the city survey results from this last time, we actually went up, you know, in this area, and we hope to continue to improve it. We've already done the first action item, the Nextdoor pilot project for public hearings and progressing, and we'll get feedback on that at some point in time to you, but I think, again, that's on that informing. We don't even take comments on Nextdoor, so I think that shows, we are just telling people what we're doing, and hopefully it gets them to the next stage where they do come and they participate. Item two, live streaming of city commissions. You know, we have the ability, especially with the technology upgrades, to very easily now start live streaming our city commissions. It would require a little bit of training to, you know, from that standpoint, but we have clerks in the meetings, they can come in, they can start, it'd just be a wide shot from that perspective, but we would record it, and then could make it available to the community if ever needed. So fairly low-cost, easy-to-implement activity. The third one is implementing text-cellphone-based messaging system. I know we're already starting to experiment with this a little bit in the context of emergency services, you know, so you can try to, you know, create systems, but the thing I really wanted to maybe stop right here and highlight is, a lot of what I'm proposing in some of these things, this is really the way people communicate nowadays. And I think it's important for the city to think, if this is how people are communicating, not everybody, but especially more and more generations, I mean, you see more and more people, my mom just got a smartphone, doesn't know how to use it yet, great, but she's doing that, we need to be trying to focus on how we can connect with people on these devices in other ways. So that's really what this is about, is how do we implement using phones for the purposes that we want in this process? So I'll stop right here and see if I've gotten, if there's any concerns or thoughts on these items about, should we be looking at these opportunities or not?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Robert, can you give us maybe a little bit more synopsis about the text-phone-based messaging system? Is that Coffee with the Mayor is this morning, and you should come? Is it, it snowed four inches, so priority roads are going to be plowed? I mean, what's the envision of that?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, I think it's a little bit of all, you know, and that's going to be developed over time in the context. And I know that J.C. has done a little bit of work on this topic from that standpoint, but really starting from the standpoint of emergency-based information, from that standpoint. The interesting thing with phones, cellphones specifically, is you are limited by the FCC in how you can communicate, which way to do it. A lot of it's an opt-in system, from that standpoint. So really, when we start talking about this, it is, if you're looking at creating notification-based systems, they're primarily opt-in systems. But that is, yes, what you talk about, that is, in this case, in the inform section, that's exactly what you're talking about, ways to communicate via text to people who sign up for that purpose.
And I think the thing that we have to be cognizant of is how much do you want to use it? If it really is to be relevant to crisis response, you don't want all the other stuff in there, because they stop reading it. And we get that in all employee emails, you know? You can't put too much out there, or people tune it off. And so that's going to be the delicate balance, and how you want to phase it in or tier it in to see how it's being utilized, and that sort of thing, that's all to be discussed.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
A thought on that is, when people are opting in, they can opt in for different choices. One could be emergency-only, one could be city events and emergency, or city events only, and then if they came from different phone numbers, that wouldn't be, that redundancy wouldn't be an issue as far as just getting too many messages if they opt in for all of the services, and they might be getting them several times a week. I don't, I think that, I think there are ways of overcoming that and still allowing...
And that's what we do with Pulse Point. You can get everything or only something specific, and so depends on, I guess, the application.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Palmer.
I think in the long term, what I'd like to eventually, over who-knows-how-long, see is a city app that has all the relevant information on the website, as well as opportunities to opt in and out of various push notifications. But in the short term, it is so cheap to set up these kind of text-based notifications that, as Councilman Mylum was going through, being able to opt into various things, whether, hey, I just want a text every Monday when the This Week in Meridian comes out, and then, okay, here's your link to your video for this week, or if you want just emergency notifications in the city. If you want a notification every time City Council goes live, or every time your commission you're interested in goes live for the stream, here's your link. The texting is such a cheap option to set up quickly and affordably, while I think we need to work towards an actual application.
Madam Mayor, Council. And to your, just to answer some of your questions, well, what I haven't done is I haven't developed plans to all these things, to look into them. It's just really looking at the concept at this point in time, and if we think that communicating via text, phone messaging is a way to go, then we would start looking at what is being done in emergency management. Is there an add-on, or do we need to go a different direction specifically to do that? And so that's where I'm looking, again, this is the easy, to me, this is fairly low-hanging fruit, easy, cost-effective. Not to say there will be no cost, but I haven't scoped out what the cost would be.
Sure.
If council says, yes, this is something to do, then we begin that process and see where we go from here, and working with, whether it's IT or public safety.
Or if it's a city app, and you have that end in sight, it's, what are the various steps to get there, considering cost elements, resources?
Correct.
All of that.
Yeah. I mean, what we've seen, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, what we've seen from other cities is they often have like a 411 system, Provo 411. And we, I know we like to look at Provo a lot, where they do have that app, they have that functionality, they've developed that aspect. I can't tell you what it costs at this point in time, but if that's, if this is something that we say we want to do, we can start looking at what is the best avenue to get there, down that road. But as also, there's a, as you mentioned, there is a component of people getting annoyed by text messaging, is that the best way to communicate? But I think that's the preferred way of the immediate generation right now. Any concerns over streaming commission meetings?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Mylum.
I think it's a great idea, Robert. I mean, just to get, to have more involvement from the community and allow people to watch it, and also when we're doing a search for new commissioners, it gives them a resource to kind of keep in touch with and see what, what do they do, and, you know, they can go back and watch several meetings and kind of do a little bit of homework, and hopefully we'll get some more applicants when those openings come up. So I think it's a good idea.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Madam, I was going to echo Councilman Mylum's comments. I think with all three of these, it's bring us what you think the best plan is, and I think we're all supportive of looking at doing this, and we wanted to see what the details are as far as implementation.
Okay. And onto item two. So this is consulting, and this is, you know, again, just kind of focused on public hearings. You know, think about public hearings in that aspect. You're asking the community, but ultimately, whatever they say, that doesn't necessarily matter from that standpoint. You're the ultimate decider, deciders, you know, because people can say something that has nothing to do with the application, it can have everything to do with the application. But from that standpoint, looking at the suggestions here, and we've already talked about some of these, I know some of you are very interested, you know, but, you know, we can easily set up components to take public testimony using the text message, you know, where you text to a number, it comes in, you know, no different than an email, very basic, simple stuff. The other thing that we've been exploring with is the, you know, phone audio/video technology, taking, you know, taking public testimony over Skype, just for lack of a better way to put this. I know there's been interest from the council in this, we have, we believe we can do it in with the, with our system. We might need to do some small technical changes to our audio system to allow it to occur, don't know exactly what the cost would be. What we did find, though, from our own testing of it, it would be great to be able to use the Skype for Business platform, but it has, just because we don't, I don't expect to be inundated with people all lining up to testify over Skype, but the person-to-person has a lot of limitations, the way it exists, so that you could only have one person, you know, so it'd be nice to be able to have other ways where you can communicate with people to say, I'd like to do this, and you can notify, and you can have a communication tool on the side so that you can then bring them in. And Skype for Business does that, but it's really, Microsoft hasn't put the emphasis into it to get it really up and working, the problems that we found. IT reached out to them and said, yeah, we know that's a problem, but we're not going to experience it. That being said, we could do something that would probably be clunky, but could make it available to the community, to use something like a very basic Skype system, if that's a direction. And again, there may be a financial aspect to make the technology side work for the audio. I don't know if that's a $10 pair of cables or more than that, to make that occur, but from that standpoint. The next one on the list is perform telephone town halls. Again, that's trying to get at people on cellphones. Some of the things that that allows you to do, I mean, I think everyone here is familiar with the concept of telephone town halls. Again, it's primarily landline-based, unless people opt in. Those are the restrictions that you have on telephone town halls. It would allow us to connect with a larger portion of our community, I think, than what you currently see at your town halls, but it has a cost. This does have, this is done by a third-party vendor in order to make those occur. You're looking anywhere from, you know, $1,500 to $3,000 per tele-town hall, based upon the number of, it's all based upon the number of dial-outs, number of people who pick up, how long you're on the phone, that the more you have, the less it costs. I know that seems ironic, but that is true. But like I said, it does have a cost to be able to perform that function, and, but it is a way to connect with people that we aren't currently reaching them. The third item is, you know, implementing the use of phones, social media, online polls for proposed changes, not on land use issues, but the, you know, just again, looking at, is there a way we can use technology to get greater feedback from our citizens on issues that is in this level of feedback? This might be more along the lines of, you know, the Arts Commission putting out a survey or a poll, which one of these do you want, from that standpoint? And then actually just listening to the feedback and taking that recommendation type of things. But that's just, again, so I'll stop there for any feedback on those three items.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Are we having members of our public asking to be able to call into town halls? Is that, is there, I guess, that's something that's new that I haven't heard, and I'm just curious where the motivation to bring that idea is coming from.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, Council. Let me back up, and this is not people calling in, this is doing telephone town halls, or we are calling out to the community. And I apologize, I assume most people are familiar with that component. So what, this is what you see a lot in Washington, D.C., or congressional, even Governor Otter did one not that long ago for the F-35 thing, where you, basically, you call, as a city, you call your residents and say, we are going to have a town hall on this topic at this time. And they can get on the phone and participate in that town hall, listen to the discussion. You typically will have a moderator, so if they want to submit questions that can be asked through that process, whether it's either on the phone or in writing, from that standpoint, so I apologize, you know, that is what a telephone town hall concept is about.
Madam Mayor, I guess, maybe some clarification, then, how, when Governor Otter did his telephone town hall, what was the participation like? Is it tens of people, hundreds of people, thousands of people?
Madam Mayor, I don't know, I did not reach out to them. I just know I received one at my house recently, from that standpoint. You know, from the conversations, you know, it's...
I think this is really throwing things out there for what is, and really, we don't have time to go into it in depth, but if we want to do this more in depth, I think we need to put this on as a specific agenda item.
Madam Mayor, can I just make one comment on that? Not too deep. The telephone town hall, to me, the whole concept seems fairly antiquated, like, when you have computers and video, why would you want to, I don't understand why anybody would want to sit on the phone and listen to something when you can see it.
Well, because not, there are old people out there, too, who use telephones.
People have iPads and stuff. Okay, we'll bring that up later.
We have a rotary phone. I really don't.
We're only going to talk to...
Madam Mayor, I can answer that question, at least from the perspective of the thing, is, those things are, they're not interactive. You know, when you get that, you can have people that will just listen on the other side. If you want to make it interactive, you really can't do that over video. There's no, there's only three companies in the United States that do telephone town halls type stuff with the technology. And there's nobody that can do it with a video platform that will allow people to watch and participate. I mean, you have GoToMeeting...
It's my wife.
But that's a one-way. You can't have people commenting back to people, moderate, there's all, people can make comments, don't get me wrong, I understand that people can make a comment, but that's a little bit different than having a town hall, information, where you're conveying information, and people can ask questions, and you give everybody a response back. So it's a two-way communication.
So, Madam Mayor, maybe to...
Mr. Cavanagh.
...move these things along, here's my feedback. As you know, I'm very much in support of trying to implement a way to let people provide testimony through a variety of different mechanisms. I love the idea of the text piece. I think we need to move forward with a Skype or Skype-like technology to allow people to provide testimony. I'm not there on the telephone town hall piece. I think at the federal level or the state level, where halls of government aren't as connected to the people, it makes more sense, but I think that people know if they've got a question or concern, there's lots of different places here locally that they can, they can turn to. I also support the idea of online polls for proposed changes. I was at AIC, and there was a municipality that they had three proposals for playground equipment, and they turned it over to the public and let the public vote. I thought that was great, and the public responded in kind. So I think most of those that are there are things I would be supportive of, just not the telephone town hall.
So these next three just have one component, and this kind of follows a little bit on what was just discussed, just mentioned right there, the involvement. And I look at this from the comments I receive back from City Council throughout the budgetary process and the participatory budgeting. You know, wanting to take participatory budgeting to the next level. To me, this is an area where you can do just that, where you can, you can set up maybe a group that oversees, and you can work on a larger scale within the community using social media, other components in order to do that. So this is just, again, looking at using that for these types of purposes, and participatory budgeting was the main component that I was looking at from that standpoint. I'll just run through these next two, because there's only a couple more on all these. Collaboration, and this is one where I think it's, you know, again, not trying to preach, but from the standpoint of feedback that I've heard from people who have served on commissions, whether they're ad hoc or ongoing, is when we ask our citizens to do a job for us, and then we choose not to take their recommendations. And I think that that is something that is out there, from the standpoint of those who have been involved, and I can say it's community-wide, but to me, this is where, you know, again, as a council, when you get further on the right into that collaboration level, and you're, that's where you really are starting to seed some of your decision-making to the residents, in order to get back to the overall mission of this, of the strategic, of the strategic plan item, you know, where you're trying to get them to be involved in the decision-making process to that level. So from this one, it's, are there areas, ordinance changes for specific items that would make sense, that would enable certain decisions made by our commissions, basically to be the, to be the decision of the city? That's kind of the best way I can phrase it, from that standpoint. You could look at the compensation committee as an example, where we have an ordinance that says that they shall exist, and they do work for us, and then council makes a decision on what their recommendation is, as an example. You know, you could extend that down into other commissions as well, and look at what they do in terms of where, what decisions should they be allowed to make through this process that are not necessarily going to be council-related decisions? That's something that, again, would need to be vetted out more, but that's what that one is, would be, and we want to have further conversations of the plan. And the final item is really using the public vote more to determine larger issues in the community. And, you know, I just listed some of the items here, you could always do an advisory vote, where you're not, where you just take the recommendation of the community on what they are, and those are limited to when the county would run the elections, you know, bond measures, I, again, not trying to be preachy, but I've heard certain members say, we're never going, we shouldn't do bonds. Well, to me, that's like local option tax, when the legislature says, we're not going to give the cities the ability, because they don't know what to do. If the residents want to use bonding, why would we not ask the residents to use bonding if they want, if they think that's a way that they can get some things that they would like to see in the community, from that standpoint? Other government agencies have put bonds on the ballot, and they voted no. Is the city in a position where we don't think that they would take the same opinion on those issues? And again, not listing things specifically at this point in time, but just, I'm just trying to put that question out there, is, these are the types of areas where if you really want to engage the community, getting them into letting them make decisions is how you can involve them further in items. So with that, I will rest, and see if there's any comments on these last three items that you'd like to feather, further out more, if you want to think about them, I'm happy to come back in the coming weeks and have additional follow-up and conversation. But that's where I am on this item, and my next objective is to put together a plan for each of these items, and I'm just looking to know which items I'm, should be looking to implement.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Robert, I really loved the last one. I think that our job is not to assume that we know what the public, even though we were elected, but not to assume what they would like or what they would choose to do with the, with their taxpayer dollars, and I think, not only with money issues, I think there are a lot of things... not only with money issues, I think there are a lot of things that should, that we probably should be putting on the ballot, and some things that we've discussed recently, at, at least on some of those, to get an advisory type of a decision on some tough decisions. Obviously, the, the financial ones would need to be, you know, an actual vote, but I like it. Thanks.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
It's a, it's a vastly different conversation, the, the original objective of improving citizen access to government is totally different discussion than, than in delegating authority to citizens to decide that which you were elected to lead and decide. Huge philosophical difference there. I mean, the original objective, which is a fascinating conversation perhaps to have, but the, the objective I thought was focused on access and making what we do and how we do it open and available. If citizens, for whatever reason, don't desire to participate in any of these mediums, that's their right, but we got to make sure everything we do is open and available and easily accessible. There's that conversation which is of more interest to me. The other one is a hugely different philosophical debate of democracy versus republic and the role of elected officials that I think is really big. So if you want feedback on whether these last ones should be developed, there's more conversation on that.
I, I do think, though, that, that the question in access is, do you want two-way communication, or do you want it just, how do we better inform our citizens? Or how do we better inform and accept comment back? Because once you invite them in, they're going to want a voice in it. And, and I think that's the fundamental question here, that, that this is, it, it is two separate things to a degree, but in some sense, and, and you caught that a little bit in the Public Works presentation, you got a lot of growth and a lot of regulatory requirements coming down the road that we're anticipating. This last one is, is going to come back to you, for sure. And, and yes, it's a different subject, but it, it does have a lot to do with access and, and how we're wanting to communicate and collaborate with our citizens.
And, Madam Mayor, and, and Councilman Borden, I hope, that's why I was trying to, at the beginning, the objective summary, which, when we first brought the strategic plan, there was a lot of questions about what does that mean in those things. So the objective summaries were developed to further clarify what exactly that meant, and that hasn't changed since the original plan, you know, after that initial thing. So i, it is been a million, and I'll be honest with you, I mean, that's not where my head was when I first started working on this objective. You know, I was looking at, how can we, how can we make this occur from this standpoint? And maybe, maybe it was wrong to find this other place that ruled, but I think ultimately, I did, I became passionate about that when I saw that, and I said, you know, if we really want to be a community that engages with our citizens in the planning operations and decision-making process, it's on the right-hand side of this thing. Now, whether or not we can go there or not, that's why I mentioned, I don't think a lot of communities are there. And, you know, I would argue that most communities, no, they, they don't really touch that. You know, the elected body here is who makes that decision. So from that standpoint, again, it is a philosophical conversation, I, I encourage people to, to rest on this, and maybe we can come back in December or January to, to federate out a little bit more from your feedbacks, and we can start working on the first two items, the easy ones, where, where we are comfortable, and we spend all of our time as cities, but the other three are different. And, you know, I'd welcome one-on-one conversations with any of you about your philosophical thoughts on democratic, democracy, republic, and what makes sense and doesn't, and I don't want to take any more of your time tonight, so.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, throw the bomb and run.
Yeah.
Yep.
I just, I don't make those comments to negate, I think there's tons of value in everything that's-
No, I think it's fundamental.
... recommended, in particular, the, the more modern means to receive communications and input, and there's been talk before about, you know, receiving live testimony online for a public hearing, so senior citizens or, or folks that might not be as mobile and able to get out can still participate at these public hearings, there's some low-hanging fruit that would be wonderful to utilize, improving their, their access to this process.
Well, and, Madam Mayor, Councilman Borden, I can get this objective done a lot quicker if you just help me do the low-hanging fruit, and then I can move on to the next item and, and be happy, but I would love to channel with people and continue the conversation and, and see where we can really go with some of this.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And maybe a last thought from me. Maybe, instead of thinking of ways that we can have an all-encompassing outreach and, and attempt to, to get interaction with the public, we take, we pick a thing, one thing that we really, really want citizen participation in, to me, that would be the budget process, whether it's the budget hearing, or the, the roundtables or something, and find, pick one or two, maybe three of the tools that Roberts identified, and implement it for that thing, and see if we can drive some participation on the budget, or a parks plan, or, or any number of things. And if we don't get anything-
A comprehensive plan.
And if we don't, if we don't get any interaction, then maybe we're just beating our heads against the wall, and we're open enough, and available enough.
Madam Mayor, Councilman, and I'm, I'm not trying to shoot myself, maybe I am, or the city, but you could put an advisory vote on about whether or not to take the 3%. I mean, if you want to engage the community, there's a great way, and, and part of that is the discussion, what do you get for that? You know? I mean, that, there, there's a great policy example of what you may want to do, and, but that, that requires a lot of people to say, is that, is that the, is that the appropriate thing, or is that what you were elected to do? And that is a philosophical conversation, or a personal one, or, but, you know, I, I think it'd be great to have a conversation about what you get for the 3% from a city standpoint. Do you get parks, do you not? Do you get a new park?
I think you probably would have residents who want to vote on every annexation, actually.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Okay, I lied. My, I like the idea of an advisory vote, my hesitation is that you can't get all the information needed on-
On the ballot.
On the ballot. While I think that would maybe go more my way, when the, when the vote actually takes place, I, I have the same concern with that as I do if we were to put a bond on there. There's so much deeper information necessary to fully understand the ramifications of a bond, that I hate having that on a ballot for all of the citizens to vote on, I feel like that's something that they put us here to, to study into and to figure out for the same reason that I think the 3% is, is something that they've put us here to, to figure out, because you can't get all that information that they would need to make a, a realistic decision with how many people just show up to the ballot, not knowing what's going to be on there until they get there.
Yeah, but that's the same argument of, I'm going to go and vote for someone that isn't even opposed, and that is, that's the mandate. So, I, I mean, the, the conversation can get really big, and say, you know, when, when is it appropriate to ask for the citizen's voice? And what does that mean if they participate? We, we did that in a public art project, we went out and asked them to vote, and the commission didn't like what they've, what the result was, came back to the council, and the council agreed with the, the commission, and-
People were bad.
-only negated the citizen's voice when we asked them. So, that, that's, it gets complicated. So I would suggest that you break these subjects out, and, and do the, how can we get better at sharing information? And then have the conversation that will be more in-depth and, and can get, probably you'll find there's a couple more different categories than just two here, because I, I think there are, even in that regard, is once you start inviting conversation, what you do with the information.
Sorry.
Yes, Ms. Malin.
Well, in regards to what Councilwoman Palmer said, just doing it with just the budget, I think getting people to that point is a great idea, but that's not where you want to start, and it's like marketing, it's going to take time, you're going to have to start little, and it's going to take a long time to get these people actually engaged on a regular basis, and eventually, they're going to step up to the big stuff, I think. But, Nextdoor, for example, Nextdoor has been around for, like, five years, and it, people didn't really start using it until the last two years, I mean, really heavily. So it took them a long time of putting stuff out there, and, you know, but I think there's the bulk of the community just kind of got on board the last couple of years. So it's, it's going to be a long process, I think the more things you have access for the citizens, the better, not just giving them, you know, one-time shot, and then if it doesn't work, give up on it, because that's not how it works, in my opinion.
Thank you, that was discussion. Next steps, we will be integrating dashboard information into your quarterly reports, as you saw with the pie chart and the two gauges, and the objective review is, is next February or March, I, I can't remember what we passed in the ordinance, do you? It's early in 2018.
Yeah.
It was March.
Madam Mayor, real quick, I think we left the concept of this biannual review, where we would have the focus areas, and the goals, and the objectives, and as objectives got completed, we, we'd see, you know, the red line through that objective, you know, completed, and a date, and as we go forward, we're going to be adding new objectives in those focus areas, maybe there's nothing new to add yet, but following these biannual reports, it'd be good to circulate out that, you know, the strategic plan, as of the October 2017 report, so we can see those objectives redlined out that have been completed or removed. Because this document will live, and over five and 10 years, we'll see progress made on our consistent focus areas.
And I, I think we didn't, the conversation, as I recall, in June is, you didn't want them removed, and that's kind of why we did, we did a closeout, you'll still see it, and if, as we, we bring the updates on the, the, not the annual side, where you'll be having specific discussions on the objectives, but on the other side of that, oh God, I talked long enough, I forgot what I was saying.
To say, "I agree, I agree, Joe."
No, I, I won't agree. We just brought you the, those areas that we're going to have to, to bring you back, those red lines, and, and have the conversation in, in the objective part. I'd like to keep the objectives that are closed out on there, so you can see them. Some of them, as I, I noted, I think it does warrant a semi, a biannual update, just to say what is continuing to on-go. My, my concern with the, the plan was, some of those areas were ongoing, and they need to be more initiative and specific, and so that's what we're really trying to drill into, and we'll have a more robust conversation next spring.
Madam Mayor, I, we're, I think we're seeing the same thing, I'm just, the, the one-page sheet that I know I've seen from before, all I'm asking is, of the six that we talked about that are completed, just keep them on there, they'll be the red line through, and it'll say, "Complete," you know, June 17, or-
100%.
Right?
Didn't we get that?
So at least, we'll have that summary sheet, as we go forward, we'll see, you know, progress, 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 new things come on, new things come on, that's all.
And we, we can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we did have one complete between when we talked about it in June and now.
And they don't come off of, we don't delete it, we just-
Okay. Yeah.
Good to see.
Can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, um-
I guess, Madam Mayor.
Any, yes.
All right, I didn't know if this, now's the appropriate time, I have some additional questions that I was hoping for. First off, Roberts' presentation, I don't know how the rest of council felt, but I felt that was like the most well-put-together component of our strategic plan that we have had since this whole thing has been crafted. I thought that he dived in deep, provided some explanation, made some recommendations for council to chew on. I, I hope as this process plays out, that we see more of that than what we saw from Roberts today, than what we've seen in the past, I just think that is, at least for me, what I've envisioned when I thought we'd be having the discussion about the plan. My questions were about, I just was curious, and, because I don't have any of my paperwork with me, did completion dates on some of this stuff change or evolve from when we last talked about it this summer?
The completion dates that I stated in my presentations were, were from what you, I don't know, I can't answer that specifically. But the completion dates are, we did compare it from the original date, and I think the only one that changed was actually backwards. We, we had it in 2007, and it changed to 2016, so we're cleaning that up. But, some of the, the items that we'll discuss at the annual update is if that completion date is different from what you last saw, and why. Because those are really driven by the tactics, and, and if there's something that substantially changed in regards to the tactics, kind of like you saw with Caleb's, is, he had to bump him out because of, of staff resources, same as HR, you'll be seeing that. But she can still kind of fit within the strategic plan, and the overall completion date, just not what she had on each tactic.
And, Madam, Madam, what about, I just was curious, one of the elements within the, the online portion talks about the total budget cost. On these tactics that we're hitting, are we finding that they are being completed under budget, at budget, over budget?
The ones that have a budget request associated with it, once they're approved by council, it, it, it rolls into, to the budget itself.
Madam Mayor, right, I, I understand that, I just was, because there's a number called out on the plan, I'm just curious, I, I, I guess I could, I could go back through past budget pieces and, and apply that, I just was hoping that, because we've got a dashboard, if, if we were able to tell, did that particular objective, did it meet its budget request, or was it over, or was it under? That's, that's all the clarity I'm trying to find.
So, that's just regarding a tactic, like when we're requesting resources?
Again, Madam Mayor, on the, the form, it always, oftentimes it lists an estimated cost, sometimes that estimated cost is zero, but sometimes that estimated cost is half a million dollars. And I'm just curious, when there's an estimated cost with these, are we, are we hitting that cost? Are we overspending, are we underspending?
The, the plan that was, was early, early on, contemplated, if, yeah, sure.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman, Member Cavner, originally, when, I think you're going back to probably when the plan was first submitted to you guys, we had those objective sheets with kind of wild guesses of, not wild, but I mean somewhat broad guesses of what we thought cost would be. We designed into the software the ability to add an estimated cost to each of the tactics, but we're not, I think we made the decision, or to move forward with, you would see those costs as these things from the strategic plan come forward through the budgeting- costs as these things from the strategic plan come forward through the budgeting process, that's when a true cost would be assigned to it, and you would see that cost that you, that's identified back to the strategic plan. They're not being tracked as a percentage of completion or anything like that in the plan now, so, is that, does that answer?
Yeah, it absolutely does. And then...
Yeah, because you approve every one of those resources.
Right. Madam Mayor, just so, I want to make sure that I'm prepared for our discussion then, six months from now. Can you share with us what the goal of the annual update will be, and what you would hope to see from council during that meeting, so that we can prepare between now and then?
Well, I kind of touched on some of those high-priority areas that are, what they have found is, the tactics didn't necessarily support the objective, or the rating of low, medium, high were not in sequence with each other. So in those areas, such as the safe community and healthy community, those are being reworked by the two leads, the police and fire. And as it relates to the other, because those are both kind of multi-departmental-associated, the lead is with one department, but there's many different efforts going in those areas. So at this point, I can't tell you what exactly you can prepare for, but I do think that the departments themselves, and seeing, we did reach out and say, are there anything like what Robert did in the access-to-government discussion, something that they want to do? If they want to, if they need a deeper dive into it, and I would imagine that in both safe community and healthy community, that discussion will be had, that will be happening in advance of the annual discussion. I don't think that was a non-answer, but I was thinking out loud, too, because I have to process those as well. Anything further from council? Okay. Item eight, future meeting topics. You heard of the two park openings. You do have the invitations in front of you. We also have the Faith Leaders Luncheon on Thursday, October 12, from 11:30 to 1:00 at Valley Shepherd Nazarene Church, and Galway Thunder Air Show, Saturday and Sunday. So with that, I'll move to item nine, executive council or session.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
Move, we go into executive session, Espirito Santo, Code 74, 206, 1F.
I have a motion, a second to adjourn into executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilwoman Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Milam.
Aye.
Councilwoman Palmer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilwoman Burton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bird.
Aye.
Lice.
Aye.